Okay, everyone, we're going to start with our next agency, the Department of Public Works. And we'll be hearing from Director Zaid. He'll start with his presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Council. Council President Cohen, esteemed members of the Council and Baltimore residents. As Director of the Baltimore City Department of Public Works, I'm pleased to join you this evening to highlight our efforts in maintaining the financial stability of our agency while continuing to deliver on the promise of safe, clean drinking water, reliable waste disposal, and sustainable infrastructure. With nearly 2,500 dedicated employees, DBW operates around the clock to uphold public health, environmental compliance, and regulatory standards. We've taken decisive steps to modernize our aging systems, invest in workforce development, and meet the demands of federal consent decrees, all while managing higher inflation and legacy costs. Our progress reflects a commitment not only to our infrastructure, but to the people who maintain it, with expanded safety training, equipment upgrades, and pipelines program preparing the next generation of skilled city workers. I look forward to sharing more about how this proposed budget supports a stronger, more resilient DBW for Baltimore city residents. And now I'll hand it in to my deputy director to go over the presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Mr. President, esteemed members of the committee. As Director Zaid mentioned, I am Matthew Garbark, the interim deputy director for the Department of Public Works. The Department of Public Works is divided into two functional categories, the Bureau of Solid Waste as well as the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. There are 12 different budget service centers that are included in DPW's budget. We will go over those in more detail. DPW's mission is straightforward. We strive to enhance and sustain a healthy quality of life for every resident and customer by efficiently managing and delivering our services. Our mission must be closely aligned with Mayor Scott's, is most closely aligned with Mayor Scott's clean and healthy neighborhood pillar, specifically the goals to improve the cleanliness of Baltimore neighborhoods, streets, parks, and public spaces, provide affordable world-class water service while maintaining safe and high-quality drinking standards, and moving the city towards zero waste and to a more sustainable future. Next slide. I'll now go over each of the services, budget services. The first service is Service 660, which is Solid Waste Administration. This service provides for the executive leadership and administrative support for the Bureau of Solid Waste. For fiscal year '26, DPW's Office of Waste Diversion is being transferred from this service to Service 664, along with $200,000 to support their curbside composting collection pilot program. The service has decreased by $395,000 to better reflect actual costs for professional services as well as computer software costs. Finally, maintenance for solid waste facilities in the amount of $816,000 are split over the other services to better reflect the facility needs within each of our areas. Next slide. Service 661 is for public right-of-way cleaning, which covers street, sidewalk, alley, and storm drain cleaning. For fiscal year '26, the service is increasing. There are increases to cover the costs for expanding our maritime and downtown operations division located at Eastbourne Avenue. This service also includes $5.3 million for street sweeping, which will be funded through the Stormwater Utility Enterprise Fund. Finally, the service funding continues to fund street and alley cleaning, bulk trash collection, business district cleaning, and graffiti removal. In terms of performance, our crews have done a great job this past year, and we are looking to increase the number of service requests that we complete for fiscal year '26 to 62,000, and we are looking to close 98% of those on time. Next slide. Service 662 covers vacant and abandoned property, cleaning, and boarding. This service also funds our rat rubout program. For fiscal year '26, this service is decreasing by $86,518 to better align with actual spend. However, it is increasing by $200,000 to cover the rental costs for our Crescent Street facility. So there is somewhat of an offset there. For fiscal year '25, we sought to complete 90% of boarding service requests on time and to conduct 144,000 proactive rat inspections. For fiscal year '26, we are keeping the 90% completion rate the same, but we are looking to increase the number of proactive rat inspections to 155,500. Next slide. Service 663 is the workhorse of the Solid Waste Bureau. It provides funding for weekly trash and recycling collections for over 210,000 households, 290 multifamily dwellings, as well as various commercial businesses. This service is increasing by $5 million to continue the contractual support for collections, which come the first of the next calendar year, we are looking to transition into 15 new crews for our routine services collections. $2 million is also being added to support 10 crews that had originally been funded by ARPA funding. Our performance measures for fiscal year '26 will remain the same as they were for fiscal year '25, not to exceed one-half of 1% of mixed recycling collection, missed routes, missed stops, and the same for missed trash collections. Next slide. Service 664 covers waste reuse and disposal. This service funds the operation of the landfill as well as the Northwest Transfer Station and our recycling processing costs. For fiscal year '26, this service includes $13.8 million for landfill tipping fees, consistent with fiscal year '25 levels, as well as current spending trends. $7.9 million is allocated for landfill closure and development, which is a 3% increase in order to support our capital planning for the current and future landfill expansion. Finally, the service provides for overtime funding to align with actual costs for landfill and Northwest Transfer staff time. In terms of performance measures, we are going to maintain our goal of disposing 245,000 tons collected annually. However, we are looking to adjust our target for recycling tonnage. We do believe 15%, a 15% target is the more appropriate target. Next slide. We will now move on to the Bureau of Water and Wastewater. Service 670 funds Water and Wastewater Administration and Management. The funding for this service comes from the Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Enterprise Funds. For fiscal year '26, the service is 8% down based on transfers of contract funding for our water billing system to Service 672, which is Water and Wastewater Consumer Services. Additionally, this service reflects 39 positions that are transferred into other services from this service. So there is no net loss of the positions. They are just transferred to other budget areas. These are changes to budgeting location and don't actually reflect a net change in the positions. Next slide. Service 671 covers drinking water management. Specifically, it is funded by the Drinking Water Enterprise Fund and covers water distribution for our 1.8 million customers. This service funds watershed operations and management, our filtration plant and pumping station operations, as well as utility maintenance for our water mains. For fiscal year '26, this service is increasing by $11.3 million. The service does reflect a decrease of 21 positions which were distributed to other services. In terms of performance, we are keeping the amount of water produced daily to 200 million gallons, which is what we generally do provide. And we are also looking to estimate the cost per million gallons will be around $330. Next slide. Service 672 is responsible for managing our water meter operations as well as our customer billing operations. The Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Funds help to provide funding for this. For fiscal year '26, this service increases by $5.1 million due to the reallocation of funds for the UMAX billing system from Service 670 to this service center. Additionally, the positions reflected in this do decrease by six positions, which are not lost, but again are being shifted to other services within the budget. We are also looking to keep our performance measures the same for fiscal year '26 at billing 98% of accounts total and to bill 98% of the accounts per billing cycle. Next slide. Service 673 covers wastewater management and includes utility maintenance operations, wastewater pumping stations, and plant operations at our two wastewater treatment plants. It is funded by the Wastewater Utility Fund. For fiscal year '26, this service is increasing by $10.3 million, primarily due to chemical supply costs. The service also reflects a decrease of 36 positions, reflecting an elimination of two positions and a transfer of positions to other services. In terms of performance, while we are permitted to treat up to 253 million gallons of wastewater per day and discharge that, our goal for fiscal year '26 is 193 million gallons per day. And we are looking to have the cost to treat a million gallons of wastewater to be around $1,700. Next slide. Service 674 covers surface water management, which is responsible for maintaining our stormwater infrastructure. This is funded by our Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This service will increase by $5.2 million, which is largely driven by higher contractual service costs as well as increase in debt service payments. This service includes $377,000 in grant funding from the state to support the enhanced nutrient removal facility at the Patapsco Wastewater Treatment Plant. The position count also increases by three, reflecting various internal transfers of positions. We are also looking to keep our measures the same for fiscal year '26, inspecting 95% of stormwater construction sites every two weeks and to conduct 90% of stormwater and engineering plans reviews within 14 days. Next slide. Service 675 covers engineering and construction management and is funded by the three different utility enterprise funds. This service oversees our capital projects. For fiscal year '26, this service is up a little over $675,000, which is primarily due to increases in staffing costs. The position count for this service also decreased by four positions, reflecting internal transfers. In terms of performance increases, we are looking to rehabilitate or replace 17,166 linear feet of sewer mains this year. And we are looking at a target of 18% for water and cellar calls per 100 customer accounts. Next slide. Finally, Service 676 covers overall DPW administration. For fiscal year '26, this includes $125,000 for a new solid waste facilities maintenance position. An additional $125,000 for contracts has been included in the DGS budget for DPW. This service also adds 11 new positions as certain functions are centralized in terms of administrative and other management functions. Two positions are being transferred to the Finance Department as well. Next slide. That concludes our presentation. I turn it back over to Director Zaid.
We'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Thank you, colleagues, for this hearing. We're going to have two questions for the first round, and you have up to two follow-up questions for each of your questions. We're going to start with Council President Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director, thank you for your commitment to our city and to the hard-working women and men of the agency. And I also want to thank you for coming out with us on that ride-along where we work a shift with the sanitation workers. I really appreciated you personally being there with us. So thank you for that. I remain deeply concerned about the health and safety of our frontline employees. I know there's been a lot of conversation with the city administrator, with others, about the heat safety plan. There were multiple IG reports. There was the Cohen-Massial report. And there have been several deaths of workers, as well as, I believe, 1,563 serious injuries within solid waste within the last five years. That represents a staggering amount of workers getting hurt. And I know that has been a top priority for you, as it has been for this council. I'm hoping that you can describe improvements that have been made to bring us closer to a culture of safety within the Department of Public Works.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for this question specifically. So the safety of our employees at this point is the premier, is the most important thing that we deal with and we talk about. So it's a big part of everything that we do, from our orientations to our employees, to every meeting that I have with the staff, to every meeting that we go on the field and we chuck on people, to me driving around sometimes and looking and watching our people in action and see that they are following what they needed to be followed. The report, as you said, or the multiple reports are concerning when they came about, and we acknowledge that. And we have done incredible amount of work. And we turned, I would say clearly right now, that we turned the corner on this issue. And we're heading in the right direction. You asked me one day, that is, I remember earlier, that is, if the system is broken. And I could say firmly now that is the answer, is an absolute no. We are heading in the right direction. We're fixing issues. We're not there yet by any means. One of the main things we looked at is establishing a plan, a heat and safety health plan. So that took us a while in order to develop one, not only for the entire agency, that now the rest of the city is adopting. And our staff that we see right now, our staff are taking that to other agencies around the city and training the staffs of other agencies in order to get to the point where we need to get to. We developed, and then after getting an agency overall, we looked at it and we developed a division specific, a task specific. So every task within DBW right now, at least within solid waste, have a plan within that department, associated with the type of work that they do. We have now, we change our emergency protocols. So our emergency protocols right now are very clearly, if you have an incident, you call 911. We have training. We've done all kind of trainings, thousands and thousands of hours of training for our employees, from civility in the workplace. We have slips, trips, and falls. We have cold weather, hot weather, accident and incident procedures. We've done all of that. One of the issues we see also, Council President, it is the weak link probably at the supervisory level. It is the front workers and then the supervisor. They need a lot of training. And we're getting a lot of training to those folks and training with accountability as well. And finally, the place where they work in and the vehicles that they use. Employees have to have that sense of pride in the place that they be in. And we developed and we invested a lot of money in those facilities and also in the fleet that we have that these people are using at this point.
No, and I appreciate all that. And I have seen your genuine commitment to making improvements on safety within the agency. And I think we still have a very, very long way to go.
Agreed.
And I want to be specific. One of the things I noticed when we were on the, working the shift with the workers, and again, want to just lift up and thank my friend and colleague, Councilman Glover, who was a former sanitation worker and who pushed us to get out there with them. One of the things that was concerning to me as we were out there and the trash compactors are compacting the trash, there's a lot of glass that would spray up. We were out on a recycling day. I noticed the workers and we, when we were out there, didn't have goggles. That was a concern. And so I'm wondering, from a health, safety, and equipment standpoint, I know during the pandemic, there was a lot of conversation about PPE and the need for masks and gloves and all the rest. But it still doesn't feel like our workers all have what they need to be safe. And so where are you? I know we've brought on, I believe, an industrial hygienist to work on this. Where are we when it comes to just the basics of, I got glass spraying up in my face, I should have goggles. I got all kinds of trash juice and potentially toxic materials that are interacting with my skin. I should have my skin covered. Just on a basic check of making sure these workers have what they need, where are we on that?
So I could say, and I'll have Yvonne add to that in just a minute. But we do have most of those materials that should refer, from goggles to gloves, to all of these materials that we have to. We probably need to be...
Why weren't they wearing them when we were out there?
I don't know. And that's what I'm probably going to have Yvonne elaborate a little bit on that. Some of them rather not, you know, wear it for some reason or another. But that is, we have, I know that we do have goggles. We do have gloves. We do have all the materials that they probably need on a regular basis. And I'll add, and I'll have Yvonne add a little bit. Yvonne, I'm sorry.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, so we do have safety goggles. I'm not sure why those gentlemen or those employees didn't have them on that day. They have the safety boots. We have cooling cloths for them. Everything that they need. They have their uniforms, their boots, their goggles, gloves, rain gear. Trying to think of what else. But they have everything they need. Now, getting everyone to wear it when they're supposed to wear it, that's what we're still working on with the supervisors. You know, sometimes it takes a little more coaching and developing to get people to do what they need to do. But we have all of those things. We have the water, we have the electrolytes. We have everything that we need for these employees.
Okay.
I'd like to add to that. And it just goes back to the, some of the work that we're working on with the supervisors. We're not there yet. If you ask me about an area that is a lot of work that is needed, it is that level above the front workers. And that is the supervisors. We need to get them into a better place. I mean, that is an issue before they left, something that the employees should have on board.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I'll say, like, the folks that we were out there with were superheroes without capes. I mean, the speed and precision at which they were moving certainly put all of us to shame. But just, there was like a, I mean, it was awesome to behold. But no one was wearing goggles. And the director was there, and several council members were there. And it just strikes me as odd, Director, that they have all that materials, but they weren't available or wearing them at that time. And so I want to wrap this question. But I just think, again, as we're thinking about how to develop a culture of safety across the Department of Public Works, that whether it's a breakdown among supervisors, whether it's just, we're not internally paying enough attention. Like, I think the time for, well, you know, what are we going to do? I think that time is over. Like, we have had too many people die in this agency, and we've had too many people get hurt within this agency for there to be anything less than a complete culture of safety across the Department of Public Works.
Yes, I agree with you on all of those points. We are still working with the supervisors, making sure they are on top of those things. They've gotten training. But we do have, we have the materials. They are given out every day. Sometimes when people get in the field, they don't wear what they're supposed to wear. But the supervisors check on them throughout the day. So if they don't see them with it on, they should be telling them to put it on. Like I said, I don't know why they didn't have it on that day. We'll look into it. We'll make sure they have it. But everything that they need, we have it. It's purchased, it's at the yards. Like I said, the supervisors check on them throughout the day. We develop a new wellness app for the supervisors so they can check, put it in that system. And we know that people are, you know, feeling their best throughout the day so that we're trying to prevent what happened last year. So we want, we're doing multiple checks throughout the day. They have radios now. They have their cell phones in the trucks. We put cooler racks on the trucks so they have, they're going to have water ice throughout the day. And then supervisors have coolers on their trucks to make sure that they are replenishing throughout the day. So we've done a lot since our last summer. But the goggle, I don't know what happened with that.
Okay. Duly noted. Appreciate you, Director. Appreciate you, Mr. Director. I'll say that will probably not be the last time city council is out there with the workers. And so it is our expectation that every safety standard is implemented across the board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And kudos and thank you as well, Director, for, you know, all the work that you continue to do in this very large department. And on that note, I want to, my two questions will focus on, I guess, billing. I was, of course, led the charge and advocacy for, with many organizations for the bill and pushing the Water for All program. And then eventually, there came the Office of Water Advocacy and Customer Appeals. And I think that office is even more crucial now than ever as our billing process still has problems, still working hard. I just, I'd like someone from that office to basically just kind of give me an update on people that are unfamiliar with that appeals process and if they're, and people that are facing barriers such as language, technology, or mobile challenges. What's a, give me an update of how you are moving forward and helping those customers.
And I'll have Mr. Mills come in and probably add a little bit to it. But the concentration on our immigrant community specifically, it is, and especially in the east side while we see it. We're going to have to do it for a couple of reasons. First is, it's the right thing to do. And second, it is probably we need to do. We're looking at some of the challenges that we face as a whole, as an agency, in terms of lack of communication to reach to that community that has somehow, some way affected the city as a whole. So what we need to do in order to get to that community and better reach out. And to do that, we have developed and we have people who speak that language who speak different, add to that. I'll ask Marco to add a little bit to that. Marco, is Marco here?
Yeah.
Just if you go ahead and just add a little bit to that.
So for the Office of Water Advocacy and Customer Appeals, one of the things really important for us is that it's collaborative. We work with the Right to Water Advocates team. We meet bi-weekly to hear from those who are advocating for our community. And that's what our office does also. And then we've got staff here. Our chief is here, Mills. Also, Terrence Jennings talks about, you know, our programs and the assistance that the office is providing to the individuals who are inquiring about the challenges or whatever the barriers may be for them to get the assistance that they would like.
Thank you. And I guess the second question in the same, I guess, frame. We're now, you're now involved with replacing pipes and contracting out in different communities. And people are calling our offices with extremely high water bills because of a problem a contractor has done. And it could be in an impoverished neighborhood or it could be in a affluent neighborhood. But when that person calls, there's been a change in... neighborhood, but when that person calls, that there's been a change in their water bill, what po- what practice or process do you use if the water billing office has not handled that situation in a timely manner? You understand what I'm-
Yeah, so, so you're talking about in terms of timing, if-
And billing, and trying to resolve a problem, because it comes to the advocacy office after there's been a law, a period of time or no resolution of a large bill, so I need the advocacy office to basically explain to me what, what, the process of how you're helping that person, and how did it get to that office anyway, there had to have been something that someone in the water billing office is not doing, and that, and it seems to be happening more and more.
We have some of the ideas, and our Chief Mills, if you could come in for a second, but is, we have some incidents in which there is a process in place, they come through the, the CSSD, and they come in, and if there is an issue out there that didn't get a resolution that they're happy with, then they could get to the next level and, and apply for Chief Mills, who will be able to explain a little bit about it.
Right, I need to understand that flow of that process, and is there still, is there, they come to you when evidently there's, it's been escalated, and there's been a problem in the water billing department, and you were there to help finally resolve that problem, but it is, sometimes it's a couple of years for it to resolve, but we get those people that come in there and, you know, demand for us to do something, and you have been very successful with doing that, and I think it's important that everyone understands how important your office is, so add that to what I'm trying to say.
Certainly, good evening, so, there are several ways that customers reach our office, if they are appealing an adjustment decision or some bill from customer service, they can call our office, because of the collaboration we're doing with stakeholders in the community and different partners, they reach our office that way, irrespective of how they get to the office, we will register their dispute, so we don't require they complete a form, we don't require they come in person, it can be a referral from a legislative office, it can be a referral from a community partner, they can call whatever it is necessary to receive that information, we do that, once they have reached our office, they schedule a time, I vet every dispute initially, once we have an understanding of what's happening, if it's appropriate for us to handle, or whether or not it should go to another department or another division within the department, we will advise the customer and allow the customer to make that choice, after we do the registration, once the investigation begins, we have a repeatable process that we follow, that irrespective of the type of dispute, every dispute goes through this process, that makes certain we've checked every box, dotted every I, crossed every T, when we're done the investigation, we write up a, well, we're compelled by the law, first of all, to give the customer a written report of what happened, and in that report, we also provide a determination of whether or not they'll receive relief in the form of an adjustment, and if they disagree with that report, their option is, the customer's option is then to appeal to the Environmental Control Board.
Thank you for that, do you have enough employees in that office to, cause I perceive many people's, you know, starting to want that kind of help as we're moving forward with pipe changes and everything, do you, would you say you need more staff in that office?
I will say that I have been in conversation with our finance team to figure out how we do that, we are currently working to augment staff through use, interviewing for, through the HBCU Fellows Program, until we're able to do that, so we can at least receive some support, so we're working to figure that out now.
And does that include some marketing strategies, so the general public knows that there's another, you know, there's, you're, they're gonna get help eventually?
So we're, we're also in conversation with the communications team, so we've discussed making certain that this office is added to the website, we've discussed having printed material, even what the branding would look like, so that we can do a full rollout of, to make certain that everyone in the city is aware of what options are available for them, yes.
Thank you, thank you for what you're doing, and I just wanted that awareness, so people know that this is a very important office that was developed from that Water for All, so there's a continued help mechanism if no one seems to be working through their problem in the water billing office, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, for all agency representatives, if a, if a question is deferred to you by the Director, please first state your first and last name, as well as your position within the agency, before you provide your comments, we're gonna go to Councilmember Glover.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and again, just to piggyback off of the President, you know, we appreciate you guys allowing us to get out there, to see the hard work that the men and women and people go through every day behind those trucks, there, there are a little bit of concerns, you know, but I think they're concerned they could be, you know, fixed quickly, you know, I wanted us to rock and roll when we went out there, meaning, when I say rock and roll, I wanted them, I wanted us as DPW, cause I'm still part of DPW, you know, that's where I come from, so I wanted us to, you know, to kick rocks, I wanted to show them off what it is that we do each and every day, but I also wanted them to make sure they got the protection and the property and the training that they needed before we went out there, so I was hoping that before we got there, that you guys would have a conversation on basically letting us know, look, this is what you do, this is what you don't do, because what happens is that, when we hire new individuals to be a part of DPW, we're assuming, cause colleagues have talked to me after that, this is how it go, like, you guys aren't training them because you guys had given us no training, as opposed to what we should and should not do when we go out there on the truck, so it's very important that the eye, the goggles and things of that nature, that we take into consideration, and, and I know at times I've, I've kinda like, you know, pushed back on, you know, past Director, excuse me, Bureau Head with Valentino, but what I can say is that, you know, during the administration, during her, you know, part in the agency, that, you know, she, she did make sure the safety part of DPW was there, so I gotta give kudos where, where, where they meet, I mean, she was really big on that, to making sure that when the equipment went out, it was safe, equipment that went out, the, the men and women had gotten the proper safety, you know, equipment they needed to go out there, do the job, and, and that's probably where, I get what I said, the style of, the, the culture was a little different, and sometimes different is good, right, because she did provide those necessi- necessities to the men and women, but I'm, I'm asking and I'm pleading that, you know, the next time we come around, we're gonna do this again, that we provide that training, you know, for those council members that do decide to go out there to see every day what our men and women do go through, we had conversations with some of the men that were on the truck that stated that it was hard for them to even get gloves, right, working gloves, and, and those conversations were held inside the locker room, I've heard those conversations, probably to me coming on the council before, about gloves, from what I'm hearing is that that's not an issue anymore, but we do need to make sure that those items are provided to the workers when they're going out there to do the job, so please take heed to that as well, my question is, I look, the DPW summary budget, the book on page 295, notes that money from the rate increases will be used to, and I quote, replace aging infrastructure and improve customer service, what specific customer service improvements should the customers of Baltimore be expecting in this fiscal budget?
The customer service request, or the customer service aspect of it, the first thing that comes to mind for me is the CSSD, obviously, in which the response time, one of the main things that we do right now is on a daily basis, and I mean it on a daily basis, myself and the staff, we meet around 9:30 every morning, and will go over our customer service numbers and what the protocols that we need to do in order to make sure our numbers are improving and heading in the right directions, and, and I mean it, daily, so we have three meetings every morning, 8:30, 9 o'clock, and 9:30, the 9:30 is solely for the customer service piece, for the water and wastewater, and, and we look at it from a general perspective, we're looking at the numbers, how fast we answer the phone calls, how fast we respond to a water main break, all of that is aspect to how fast we respect to a basement backups, all of these issues, and, and, and the ability to do it, all of those things are measures and metrics that we measure, measure, and we expect improvements in.
Okay, thank you for providing that information, my other question is, how much of the $698 million that's in, you know, DPW, how much is dedicated to contract services? Those that you reach out for contractors to do the work, a, a, a city, a city employee should be able to do, but we're contracting those jobs out for the moment, how much is really going to those contractors?
I, I can't tell you, I can't tell you the exact number, but we can get back to you and, and let you know what it is, and again, if you're looking from DBW, are you looking for water and wastewater, or you're looking for solid waste, or both?
DPW overall?
Overall, we can get you those numbers, and, and we can have this as one of the questions, I don't have the numbers on me right now, but I can tell you that it, there are some services that we're doing right now is on a temporary basis, we're talking about the street sweeping.
Right.
That is a, a two-year contract, that is, should, by the time is done, we should have all the equipment that we need, and, and, and going back to the equipments, now we have, we're gonna have a state-of-the-art street sweeping fleet by the time we're done with this, the investment that this administration has made in this is unparalleled in any organization I've been in, so it's, it's, you're talking about 34 brand-new vehicles will be there, now we only have 11, with the 11 new ones, and 21 out of the 39 that we have are working, so you're talking about 60%, 65% of those equipment that we have, by the time we get that entire fleet, we'll be ready to go and ready to rock and roll, but in the time being, we're gonna need that specific services to do it, I jump a little bit to another service that we do have, also we have contractor doing it, which is the routine services, and the intent here, and we started the process, as you see in the budget, there is $5.2 million in the budget, for creating 15 additional crews, those 15 additional crews will, at some point, take over the contractual services that we have, that it'll expire at the end of 2026, one thing we don't wanna go through, or we don't wanna have, is to go this summer or next summer with not having enough resources in order to do what we need to do, so we made sure that that is covered all the way through, we're gonna start you, those 15 new crews, we're gonna start hiring these people in January of 2026.
Okay, thanks, thanks for providing that information, I just, I just wanna kinda make sure that we push the fact that, I know, early on, we were talking about, you know, trainings for supervisors and things of that nature, I mean, we're, it's 2025, like, we really gotta get on the road, we gotta get this ball like rolling, like, like ASAP, and, and the reason why I say it is because, again, my 15 years at DPW, there were some times where the ball should have been rolling, and now it's 2025, and we're still, you know, going through some of the issues that we were going, you know, through back then, and I'm saying if these guys, women, they can't do the job, get rid of them, we get calls all day long about, you know, we need to get people hired for DPW, they're willing to work, get rid of them, get rid of them, we need to move forward, you know, Baltimore is a city where this mayor has put a lot of money, a lot of time and dedication into making sure we're keeping it clean, and he has shown it, he's led by example, you and I have conversations where we never seen a mayor put that much money into DPW, and he is doing it, him himself has driven on the back of those trucks, so I'm just saying, let's be the city, we've gotta be a power to other cities to show that we can turn this thing around, but we need to turn it around like right now, all right, so I appreciate it, thanks for your time, thanks, Madam.
Thank you, Councilman Glover, Councilman Gray.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, DPW, for being here, and before I start, I just wanna give a special shout-out to my favorite employee for Balt-, the city of Baltimore, and that is Ms. Yvonne Jackson Moore, Moore Jackson, sorry, she does an amazing job, and it's just exemplary of the work she does, the follow-up, the thoroughness, just really appreciative of having her in DPW, and wish we could replicate her across multiple departments and agencies, so my question's about the SOS program, sewage backup, and it appears that in the agency books, that you've removed the snapshot for the sewage on-site detail, which is really concerning to me, because as you know, it's something that I'm fighting for, for my folks in the Eighth District, where we have a bulk of the sewage backups, because of the infrastructure, and I guess it's the dumb luck, but as we look into the Public Works Budget Book, event, there's no mention of the SOS program, so can you tell me, if I'm wrong, if there is a service number that captures the metric that has been in previous budget books, and if no, I'm curious to why would this be removed from your agency, your agency report out, how much is budgeted annually for the SOS program as deemed by the consent decree, and, well, just, we'll go here, yeah.
Roughly, we have spent on the SOS program roughly so far from, I would say, from 2002 until now, roughly $1.4 billion, we have reduced the sewer, the SOS, sanitary sewer overflow, we have reduced that by, as a volume, by 84%, and we reduce by number by 47%, and, and when I say by number, it is, obviously you start with the big ones, have the biggest impacts in terms of volume, and that is now what we have, is the smaller pieces, that is in order to, to finish what we need to finish, we anticipate by the time we're done in 2030 or 2031, to be spending close to $2 billion, $2.1 billion on the, and, and on the sewer overflow in general, in order to minimize that or to delete it completely, so you see that this is part of the actual capital program that we do, the work that is done on the ground itself, and is done by our engineers and construction workers.
Yeah, how much, do you guys, can anyone answer how much was budgeted annually for the program, and how much has been spent year-to-date?
Ah, so you're talking about the basement back?
Yes.
Yeah, basement back, so we budget every year roughly $2 million, and we haven't spent that much or close to it in any of the previous years, and we understand that, so we went back with the past year or so, and we've been in negotiations, and I've been on the table with the folks, and the team behind us right there has done a magnificent job, we finally, finally, gotten in an agreement with both EPA and MDE on a, a number over the next few years that we both are in agreement with, we can't get into the details, they ask us not to get into these details because they're, they're worried about the, you know, it's pending DOJ approval, the Department of Justice, final approval, so we know EPA is on board, we know MDE is on board with that agreement, we're waiting, awaiting DOJ just to sign off on it, so we can really announce it, and we're eager to announce it as well, but that will be a departure, what I can tell you is it'll be a departure of what we have done in the past, what we have done in the past wasn't enough, it's gonna be a new way of doing business, and it's gonna increase the amount, and it's consistent with the modified consent decree.
Yeah, because year after year, it's been zero to none, like you said, that there, there hasn't been any payments, hardly any payments out of the SOS program, and that just leaves a lot of constituents in the bind, it, it's bad enough that you're having a backup because of old infrastructure to the city's lines, nothing to do with yours, yours can be completely brand-new, it goes into your house, and then you apply, and then the city tells you for whatever reason, because it wasn't, it wasn't enough precipitation, or it wasn't enough, the right temperature, that you're, you're telling someone no, and so I know a lot of folks in my area and just around the city are just pretty fed up about that, so I would just like to make a committee request, just so we can just continue with the, the theme that we- So we can just continue with the, the theme that we've been running every year with the numbers. Uh, I wanna make a committee request, uh, for the following information for FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four, and FY twenty-five. Uh, how many three-one-one calls were made and submitted for sewage backups, uh, into people's homes? Um, separated into dry weather and wet weather events? So that's the first part. Second of those, how many were deemed to be an issue with the city's infrastructure after investigation? And that'll be the same for both dry and wet weather events. Um, three, how many applications were made to the SOS program? Four of those, how many applicants were denied support? And then five, how much money has been dispersed in each of the fiscal year requests? Um, and then the last one is, and where's the unspent money from the, uh, from this program? Where's the unspent money going to? Um, you need me to repeat that again, or does it, do you have it?
I missed number two.
Number two, perfect, okay. Of those, how many were deemed to be an issue with the city's infrastructure after investigation, and that's for both dry and wet weather events?
Councilman, we're over here trying to capture the, capture your full request, could you, do you mind repeating that?
Yep.
Thank you.
I can also send it, um, after. Uh, the first is how many three-on-ones were made, uh, for sewage backups into people's homes? And I want it separated into dry weather and wet weather events. Um, the second is of those, how many were deemed to be an issue with the city's infrastructure after investigation? Both dry and wet weather events. Three, how many applications were made to the SOS program? Four of those, how many applicants were denied support? Uh, five, how many, how much money has been dispersed in each of the fiscal years? And six, where's the unspent money from this program going? Oh, yes, and this is for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five, sorry. And then, um. Okay, so you, you, you already answered that one. Uh, and then my second question, um, do we have that before I go any further? All right.
We can actually do it.
All right, uh, this one result, um, is rolled around recycling. What is the city planning to improve diversion and recycling rates without, uh, without funding new infrastructure? Community, um, education or composting programs?
Can I get him, please?
What is the city's plan to improve diversion and recycling rates? Um, without funding new infrastructure, community, education, or composting programs? And I asked that second part because there isn't any money being allocated to those things.
There is some money actually from a capital perspective going to composting, and it's gonna come with the east side development, the east side, the Bollies Lane. Eh, and and it is, is gonna be, the development in that is gonna be two phases. We're gonna be investing roughly twenty-nine million dollars in that facility. Within the next year or so, and big portion of that will be for composting and composting within, within the facility. But the most important thing that I like to add to that, it is, as an agency, we're looking at things a little bit differently now. And and we're looking at whether it's, it's incinerator, whether it's the landfill, we're looking at ways. That is quarantine road, and the amount of investment that we need to do in, to invest in quarantine road. In order just to expand the life of the landfill for ten years, is that the right thing to do? So we have six hundred thousand dollars that are set aside that we're looking, and we're gonna be looking really, really strongly on. What other ways that we could do, and everything is on the table. Before we start spending all the money on quarantine road to expand the life of the landfill. We might have to spend forty to fifty million dollars just to expand that, you know, for, for, for ten years, is that the right thing to do? We're gonna take a step back, we're gonna spend our money right now, and we're gonna see what is out there. Is rail, is, is, is a valid option, is a P three, is a valid option? Is going back and spending the money in, 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 and and with the new legislation, actually, in, in, taking some of the credit from the. Briscoe, what is the impact of that on us? Will they be able to survive? So you're gonna be, you're gonna see a fresh way of looking at it, and honestly looking at it, and see if there are better options. Than spending all that money, and composting will be part of that as well, as we think of it from a big-picture perspective.
And I appreciate that answer, um, but one of the things I'm gonna keep harping every time we come and you sit in front of us is the education part. Uh, I think one of the worst things we've ever done as a city is hand out those blue cans without explaining to people what those blue cans were for. Um, and we hear it over and over, we, I, I know I get a call probably once a week. From someone saying there was a missed trash pickup, only to find out that someone put their trash in a blue can, because they just thought it was just another can. Um, and so if we're not doing the education piece, um, we can roll out curbside composting. We can try to expand two days for recycling. Um, we can come up with any innovative idea, but if the community doesn't know what the idea is, we're gonna be right back at square one. So, um, I appreciate that answer, but I also would love to see more money going to community education. Um, I know it seems like people should know not to litter and not to throw things in the sewer. Um, but I think every couple of years, we need to remind people the right and wrong things to do. Um, and especially for the new generation, that kids are growing up and they're seeing these things. And there's no counter, there's no counter-education to go towards, hey, that's not right. Um, and so, um, I appreciate that answer, but I still wanna see that we are putting money into educating, um, our constituents about the. The, the good things about recycling.
I can agree more.
Yeah, I think when I recycle, I think I recycle more than I throw away trash, I can skip two weeks, um, for trash. Don't, don't quote me on that, but I can, I, please don't do it, but, uh, yeah. But I could skip two weeks on trash, I can't do that for recycling. Um, and and I couldn't imagine if we had a robust composting, uh, operation, um, it would just, I feel like we would just have a cleaner city. And people would realize that you're not dependent on, uh, trash pickup, and you don't need twice-a-week trash, so, thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Direct in the previous budget cycle, it would say that the DPW would, um, be putting out tags on these recycle. On these blue recycle, um, bins, when folks weren't using them properly. So we still have a ton of people out here who are putting, um, they recycle within plastic bags and putting them within a blue bins, um. Putting the wrong items within the blue bins, um. Have you, what initiatives do you guys have outside of, hey, there's a website that tells us this? Um, did you ever, did the agency ever start actually tagging? Those, um, blue cans so residents could just know, hey, you're doing this wrong. Maybe you can catch up next week and do it the right way. Was that ever started, or was that initiative ever?
And let, let me get with Yvonne before I answer this question.
Um, we did have the Oops Tag, it was a pilot program, and I'm not sure, I was just checking with Mike to see if we're still tagging those. Oh, I'm sorry, Yvonne Moore Jackson, um, acting bureau here for Solid Waste.
As a committee request, um, are you, I'm sorry, are you guys checking on it now?
Michael, are we using the tag?
Are we using the tags at this point?
Michael, are we using the tags? Yes or no? No?
Okay.
The answer, the answer is probably, yes.
I can talk about that.
Go ahead.
Hi, Sophia Hussein, Zero Waste Manager. Uh, we are using the Oops Tags in the school recycling program. That is where we have been kind of trying to develop and refine the process and make sure that labors are able to identify contamination. Understand, you know, what proper set-out is, and ensure that we are also communicating, you know, with the, both with the schools and the crews to, uh. Yeah, to ensure proper set-out, um, and to reduce contamination. So we are still doing that within the school recycling program, um, but we have not expanded it beyond that to curbside.
When do you guys plan on expanding that to curbside? Um, that's, that's where our issues are.
I'm just gonna be honest here, one of the struggles that we have with routine services as it go right now. It is trying to slow people down while they're doing the, the routing. Eh, and 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 we're having trouble just simply at some point, or we had at some point, for a safety perspective. Eh, because of the task work, these guys are gonna come in, they're gonna have to go ahead, and they wanna get into the, finish the route and, and leave. Eh, we're probably looking at that piece in order to do it, in order to tag. What we're probably gonna need to do is looking at a separate group, an independent group, that it goes after. And do a random checks in certain areas around the city. Or these guys could identify certain areas and have to send some people after that to look into it and to see what we can do. What I can promise, what I can tell you is, we're gonna look at that right now, that you brought it up. And look into what is gonna take for us to do a good program in, in order not. Identify everything that we go to, but at least do a random check in certain areas to figure out what we, what, what could we be done better at this issue?
Okay, this goes back to my colleague's point about education.
Yes.
Um, I think that that's a low-ball ask, I think in the past, um, it was maybe suggested the supervisors. Would, um, go through, and I know that the barriers that you guys have right now, um. And rightsizing crews and doing different things, but, um. It's an easy.
I agree.
Education piece, and it's something that obviously many of us wanna see. We're gonna go to, um, thank you, Director, um, Director, you're one of my favorite people in the city.
Um, anyway, don't make that face over there. Um, I'm really excited to have you leading, um, the department, and I know there's a lot of work to be done. Um, to bring the department up to speed and to think big. Um, I wanted to ask a question, um, that we actually had a conversation about, just a little over a month ago, uh, that regarding zero waste. Um, at the end of, uh, um, April, uh, we talked a little bit about, uh, the zero, zero-waste initiatives and. Um, our efforts to make progress toward that effect. Uh, we talked about a couple of things, namely, um, that our, um, our landfill is filling up. And we're gonna spend about a hundred million dollars to expand it for ten years. Um, we also know that the Briscoe contract, um, with the incinerator, uh, comes to an end in twenty thirty. So we're gonna, we're gonna have to revisit that conversation as well. Um, and the administration has made commitments to, uh, really look hard and fast at those issues. Um, I wanna know what we're doing in this budget to make progress on zero waste. Uh, noting that, um, you know, we're seeing an increased tipping fee, you would imagine that tipping fee might go towards zero waste. Or less waste, or something to help with sustainability to that regard. Um, but I'm not really seeing that, can you tell me what we're doing, uh, to make more progress, to follow through on the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan? And to reduce the amount of waste that's going to the incinerator and to our landfill?
Two things I wanna mention here, you brought up the tipping fee issue, Councilman, and the tipping fee issue, while it's increased the amount of money that is coming to us. But is also, is gonna decrease the dependence of a lot of the outside. Contractors who see it as the city supplement that to them. So you have people contracted from the county, it's, we have the lowest tipping fee of anybody around us. As a matter of fact, we're probably half of anybody around us. So from sixty-five dollars, so you have a lot of people coming in, filling up our landfill because we're cheap. So by increasing that, that will, you know, does for the landfill, slow down the filling of the landfill at some point. But the biggest thing that I think that is gonna be a biggest impact is really the study that we, that I just brought up to your, to your attention. The study's gonna really look at it, and I think that's the biggest zero-waste potential. Zero waste, because it's gonna be looking at things, including, as I said, a P three, a transfer station, a station where you could develop. That it, taking the recycle, separate things from the trash, from the recycling, and take the, the trash out of the, out of the area. So it's, 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 it's looking at that as a valid, valid option among everything else, so. Eh, eh, those two things that come to mind. Eh, in addition, I think we have a wonderful group of people here with Sophia and her team. That is pushing us all the times, and they're doing the right thing in order to do more. And Councilmember like yourself and others who are also asking us to, to, to work on these issues. But I think investing in the six hundred thousand dollar in the study is the biggest thing that I could think of at this point.
Yeah, I'll say, um, there were maybe three things that came up repeatedly during the taxpayers' night, this was one of the most frequent ones brought up. Um, so I, I'm, I'm, I don't, I'm not yet pleased, and it seems that the people are not exactly pleased thus far with the city's efforts to implement zero-waste initiatives. And, um, yeah, I'd, I'd really like to see more, noting that, you know, by twenty thirty, you know, this is the twenty twenty-six budget. We're looking at six years before Briscoe is, is gonna come to a close and, well, not come to a close, but we're gonna have to revisit that conversation. And we're gonna have a backs-up against the wall if we don't have any way to meaningfully reduce the amount of waste that will go to the incinerator site. Um, that's one major concern for me for, for this budget. Um, I'll go on to my second question. Um, I noted, um, we're, we're moving, um, five million dollars, uh, into contractual hauling. Um, and, you know, one of the questions I sort of asked myself about that is, uh, why are we not instead hiring folks? Uh, and I can find the exact page.
So, so Councilman, I just wanna clarify that, um, really quickly, the five million dollars is being used for two things. It's partially for contractual services to help get us through the summer. But, uh, the larger portion of that funding would be used to hire the fifteen crews that will start in January. And the goal is then that once those crews are onboarded and trained, then we phase out the use of the contractual support. But we're utilizing contractual support initially to help get us through summer twenty twenty-five. Because of the timing of adopting this budget, there's no way we, if we would have had to wait till July for the budget to get approved. It wouldn't have provided any relief, uh, to the routine services for this summer.
Interesting, uh, it, it, it's funny, um, you've actually quite perfectly painted, I think, the, the same. Problem that I sort of see with overtime. We know what we intend to do with the money, but we're doing something slightly different in the budget. Uh, and maybe it's a little bit more nuanced.
But I think in this, we've been very transparent to say that there's a two-part strategy here, so. The, and and I'll defer back to Director Zaid and his team to, to go into more detail. Uh, but when, when they laid out the request, the need was for additional support to shorten the, the, the number of stops. For our routine services. And, um, the department was very focused on how do we do that for summer twenty twenty-five? And so as we were putting together the budget, knowing that even if we were able to find a way to accommodate the request, which we were able to find a way. That having crews start in July doesn't, was not going to provide relief for this summer. And so I think every time that, that I've spoken about that investment, and in all the materials, we tried to be explicitly clear. That we are planning that a portion of the funds would be used for contractual services to help get us through the summer. And then with the focus on hiring and onboarding folks in January, which gives the department a nice runway to do training. Um, and training with individuals before putting them directly into the crew. This is not an instance of us saying we're, we're funding fifteen crews for a full fiscal year. And that we're going to reallocate savings, uh, for something else other than what we've said.
Uh, if, I can add.
Sure.
If I can add, so it's, it's, this is an existing contract, so this is not a, this is not a new contract we just implemented. What are we, what are we saying, it is that this contract will, will take this contract to take us until the end of twenty twenty-six. By that point, the fifteen additional crews, which is a forty-five total employees, will come in and will take over, should be able to take over. That's contract, we have no intention after December of twenty twenty-six that to have any additional. Contractual with, with, with anybody else beyond that point, it just, it's, it's also from a financial perspective, it doesn't work for us. So this is just a transition period, while we could have it right now, we'll create the, 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 the team that we need to. One of the issues that are identified by the, by, uh, by both the IG and the consultant that we have. It is our routes are longer than the standard. We're gonna need to reduce those routes, we're gonna need more. One of the issues that are identified by the, by, by both IG and the consultant that we have, it is our routes are longer than the standard. We're going to need to reduce those routes. We're going to need more people. We're going to need more of a bench. So this is in addition. In addition to that, we hired 30 additional SMAs now this summer to help us to create that bench, to create the workforce that we need in order to do it. I'll tell you, without that contract, we will be in very tough position this summer.
Sure. And Director, I think Directors, to clarify the point here. So of the $5 million, all of that will go into contractual services? Or will a portion of that go into staff?
No, so, and I don't have the number directly in front of me, but what we did was we costed out the average, the monthly amount for the contract and then six months of the crews. And so what you'll see then in the '27 budget is that there will be no funding for contractual services and you'll see the annualized cost for the 15 crews. And I can provide, I have that, I just don't have it directly in front of me. But if you want to submit a formal follow-up request, I could provide the month-by-month cost analysis that we prepared to arrive at the $5 million budget amount.
Sure, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Director, thank you very much to your crew and everybody who's doing a great job for DPW, both on the solid waste side and the water side. I had a question about, and I'm just pulling up the email, excuse me, about the Office of the Oversight Board that is supposed to be established for the Office of the Consumer Advocate. And there's an oversight board. Myself and my colleagues here, a couple of them have been appointed to that board, but there has been no constitution of that board. And the point of the board was to make sure that the process that we just went through based on the Vice President's question, you know, continues and that residents have another outlet if they're still dissatisfied. And so what is the timeline for constituting that board?
Let me get some more information. I'll be able to give you a specific timeline in order to do that. I just need to speak to some of the members.
Yeah, so the members of the board are, there's three council members, the IG and several members of your staff, as well as advocates that are supposed to be on there. This is based on the same bill legislation that created Water For All. So that has not been established. We have the Office of the Consumer Advocate, but there's supposed to be an oversight board. So we would like that timeline. And I'll make that a formal request to try to get that, the board, an update, hopefully by the end of budget hearings. Would that be, okay. Yeah, thank you. And then related to water bills, I think the customer service folks are just really phenomenal. They have done a great job. I have to shout out to Chief Sykes. I know that solid waste has stolen her and we have some feelings about that. But I'm glad that she's, she did a great job to establish and do a good job with Chief Curtis on establishing the office. So I think we're seeing better resolutions, where people are feeling like they're getting attention to their issues. But what I'm still having a challenge with in some of the things that we're hearing from constituents is that there are some people that are not getting bills consistently. They're supposed to be getting bills every month and sometimes they're every other month. I have a constituent that hasn't gotten a bill since November. And so I'm trying to understand what's happening there and why that's happening and what the challenges have been and how we're going to resolve those issues. You need to turn the microphone on.
I'll start and then I'll have Chief Sykes add to it. Just from a programming, from a management perspective, as I said, we understand that we have those issues. And we kind of got together and we said, one of the issues, one of the three issues that we need to deal with as an agency at the leadership level, even my level, is to deal with at this point is, this has happened to be one of the issues. We don't want to go back with issues about billing because it took us a while to develop a sense of accountability and a sense of trust from the community. I don't want to lose any of that issue with it. So what we're having as a management, we have those issues that we deal with and we talk about on a regular basis. And with that, I'll hand it to Chief Sykes to kind of get to the details of this.
Good evening, everyone. Can you all hear me? Can you hear me? Toya Sykes, Chief of the Office of Customer Support and Services Division for DPW. That's a great question. The Councilwoman and I work very closely together, along with all the other council representatives here regarding a lot of the same issues regarding customers not receiving bills. Obviously, you all are aware that we actually had a system upgrade back in June of 2024. I'm pretty sure you all have experienced these types of system upgrades when it comes to different systems as it relates to billing. We don't always know if there's going to be a glitch in the system until we get to that glitch. And we have actually addressed most of those glitches. We work very closely with Itineris. Customers not receiving bills or skipped bills is a result of some of those glitches. We work with Itineris on a consistent basis. We have an operations meeting three times a week with them. We have hot fixes that they are presently working on. We recently created a 90-day plan, action plan, to highlight the priority glitches that have been affecting the billing system, i.e. customers not receiving bills on a consistent basis. Having said that, what you will now see, and the Director has been aware of this, is that the trend for that has decreased. We've been able to bill more of our customers on a consistent basis as recent as April of this year. So I will, I would probably bet my last dollar on the fact that that will continue to show and prove that the trend is improving. I know on our end, we've gotten less calls within the last 45 days on that. So we'll continue to strive to make sure that the customers are actually receiving their bills. What we've also implemented is that for customers who have not received a bill, we actually send out a letter letting them know that we are aware of it and that we are working with our developer, Itineris, to make sure that this is addressed.
And we should continue to send these types of issues to the team that you've developed that, so that they can resolve those. Yeah. And I think the big thing with the, obviously with the water bills is when people then get it later, it becomes a shocker. And that's not anything that we want for residents. Plus, we can't tell whether there's a leak, right? And that's how we tell because there's the increase. So I appreciate that very much.
Absolutely. On another note, in addition to being able to assist customers with identifying leaks, there is a letter that we send out. It's called the high consumption letter. When we look at an account that throws an exception, and this is all billing language, so if you have any questions, I will expound on it. But the high consumption letter is sent to residents just to let them know that we've identified that their consumption has increased on their end. And we suggest that they take a look at the consumption on their end. We give them suggestions on how they can identify silent leaks, internal leaks, or maybe may request the services of a licensed plumber to come out and take a look to see if they have an underground leak. But all those things are outlined in that letter. We also, in that same letter, offer them options to assist with if they've not received a bill and it's a hardship because they didn't know that the bill was so high. So we offer them the option of Water For All, Promise Pay, things like that.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to have a whole hearing on Water For All, so.
I'm aware.
So we're looking forward to that. And again, thank you very much for all of your work in this particular space. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Many thanks to our DPW staff for being here today. Really appreciate this and all the hard work you do. We haven't talked too much about water line breaks, which maybe just because we're still recovering from a really brutal winter, but I wanted to come to that for at least a little bit. First, I want to thank the crews. I know in my district, I'm sure my colleagues across other districts, saw really dedicated city staff out working shifts in a 24/7 basis in really terrible conditions. I was out with a crew that worked for multiple hours in a snowstorm to repair water access to two whole blocks in the district. And so just really appreciate Paul and the entire team. I know they were, went through a gauntlet in the wintertime. And so just really appreciate the hard work there from DPW and especially our teams out there in those conditions. I wanted to draw the attention to two service lines. 1672, the customer service side for water. The data, the metrics there look really good in terms of their performance. But I did note that six positions are moving away, migrating away from that. I just want to make sure, just an explanation on that front and making sure that the customer service, in terms of answering the phones and responding on the water side, will continue to be strong. And then related to that, in 671, water management. My sensors is a pretty, so in reviewing our, our kind of, after six months now, one of our 311 requests for our district haven't been resolved yet. The vast majority are for water line breaks, not because of a lack of effort, but simply because of the quantity in such a hard winter. And so I, looking at 671, it wasn't clear to me that, that current service levels were going to be able to be maintained or even increased to match increased need or to address this backlog. And so thinking about our capacity to respond to water line breaks from a customer service standpoint, from a cruise standpoint, in 672 and 671, and making sure, just wanted to hear you all reflect on how this budget reflects on our capacity to handle both aspects of those, of those water repairs.
I can start talking about the big picture and maybe someone else can jump in and help out with some of the details. But is looking at the amount of investment or the amount of work that we've done this specific winter with water main breaks. I mean, this past January alone. And Stephen, how many we had this past January roughly?
612.
612 water main breaks just in the month of January alone. And the number of crews that we had this specific winter is larger than any other town that I could remember in terms of what we had. And that's why we had the ability to fix a lot of those, you know, water lines within a short, shorter period of time than what it really is needed. But it goes back to the big picture again in terms of an investment. What we do right now, we roughly do trying to balance between the amount of money that we spend on maintenance and fixing these water lines and the amount of money that we spend on repairing or reconstructing the water lines. So in order to, with the amount of money that we have or the limited capital funding that we have, I would love to have unlimited amount of resources and invest 50% of the money on, $100 million or more on water lines or creating more water lines. What we've done so far, we have a goal of 15 miles of new water lines every year. We have surpassed that every year. So I think this year we're probably going to 16 or 17 by the time we're done with it. And the fact by doing this, we're trying to stay afloat in terms of keeping with what we need to do in order to maintain the amount of work that we need to do. Not to have an additional load on us next winter. I can guarantee you that with the resources that we have, with the contractual work that we have, it's usually an issue of capacity and contractual capacity to help our internal forces. That's the only thing. I don't anticipate having to reduce any of those forces for next year. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman Matt Garbark, Interim Deputy Director. Specifically, what Bureau Head Sharkey used during, and the utility maintenance team used during the winter, those are primarily our urgent needs contracts. That's funded through our capital program. So that's actually in the engineering service area. This is more just the operations for just that. In terms of the six positions that are being transferred, those are shop positions, storekeeper positions in our meter shop. We're consolidating that within our Office of Materials Management. It's just a change in the accounting of it from one service to another. So there's no changes in the positions.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. And in 671, the decrease in positions from 623 to 602, there's a description there about some of them are part of the procurement transfer and things like that. But it does seem there are 13 positions are moving to 670 Administration Water Waste Water. Can you just speak to how those positions are changing? Whether that, whether it represents some decreased capacity staffing-wise in this line, service line?
Certainly. Not to my knowledge. My understanding is it's more to realign and reorient the reporting structure of the Bureau. I might ask, Mr. Sharkey, do you want to speak to that or our CFO about that? My understanding is we're not decreasing any positions.
There's a couple of positions that are moving around. We got the procurement piece. We've also have abolished a few positions to create more safety officers, which will be in the central administrative section.
Very good. Thank you.
Can you state your name and your position just for the record, please?
Sorry, Steve Sharkey, Bureau Head.
Very good. I'll add on to that as well. Aaron Moore, Chief Financial Officer. So there is no change to the current level of service. Those are shopkeeper and store positions. As Matt mentioned, we have an administrative materials management office that they now report to instead of the direct supervisors in the facilities.
Very good, thank you for that. My second question is following up on zero waste a little bit. Steve, I was remiss in not also thanking you for all your hard work in the winter. So thank you for that. On the zero waste front, yeah, so earlier this month, Director Larson shared at a briefing on the third quarter budget. Is it true that DPW is seeing a surplus in fiscal year '25 due to an increase in the tipping fee savings? As in, we're not sending as much as we anticipated to budget in going to Bresco? As well as lower non-personnel spending?
Yes, for that one in particular, we reallocated the funds for facilities because of the decrease in spending on tipping fees.
Gotcha, so that reallocation is taking place. But that, so yes, there was that surplus due to those two main drivers, as Director Larson mentioned. Okay. Director Larson also mentioned that tipping fee revenues, which we talked about a little bit already, had increased $2 million due to higher than anticipated, due to an increase in landfill activity. It strikes me that this is a missed opportunity, both in terms of the savings on the one side and the increase on the other side, to consider expanding, beginning, launching zero waste programs that exist in our minds and ideas and our plans, but don't exist in reality yet. The question then, and this came up at our zero waste hearing the other week, DPW made an enhancement request for zero waste, I believe yard pick, zero waste yard pickup composting curbside around the city as part of their budget process this year. Can you share the specifics of that enhancement request? If you stand by that request? For example, if the request were approved in DPW budget, what would DPW be able to do in this next fiscal year around composting?
So that request is for $4.3 million to do yard waste in general all year long. And to provide that as a separate service in addition to the, to the other services that we have. Understandably so. At the same time, we requested an additional $5.2 million for our workforce for solid waste, for routine services. So, and I understand as a department head, I understand the limited resources that as a city that we have. And a choice has to be made at some point. And while I have an incredible, I would love again to have unlimited resources, that we could have taken both. But if I, we have to choose as an agency between the two at some point. And I think a decision was made, not that we made that decision, but we recommended that as our number one priority is to increase the number of services, of the number of crews within routine services. And that's an additional $5.1 million that you see as part of the, of the deal itself. So again, it's a request I would have loved to have. Limited resources, we understand that we wouldn't be able to get.
Is there, in thinking about expanded composting, I understand on the capital side, we're building out the facility at Bolleys, but in terms of the service side, if it's not the $4.3 million for year-round yard waste, is there some lesser number at lesser level of service that you would commend to us and that DPW be ready to implement in this next fiscal year that we could consider as a council?
Thank you so much for that question. And I will allow the Director to answer. Here's, I think what I am happy to do because I understand and hear the feedback from this body about the importance of zero waste. But what I would. the feedback from this body about the importance of zero waste. But what I would caution us, especially with adding a new service, we have learned lots of lessons with some of the changes in the implementation of expanded services, i.e., when we added additional capacity around weekly recycling and it impacted our operations. And so what I want to do before adding a new service is I actually want us to spend time looking at the operational impact, looking at the staffing models that would be needed to sustain the service. So I think that what you hear from me in this administration is that we are absolutely interested in doing a curbside composting pilot. But I believe that there are steps that need to be taken prior to the implementation of said pilot, so that we can do it in a way that maintains the operations within the Department of Public Works. Director?
Yeah. The only thing that I would add to it, it is probably the operational difficulties in order to, whatever model we think, think about, probably as a pilot model, it's probably going to be a fall model, fall of this year, and the ability to hire all the folks, getting this money and hiring and be on board by September of this year, it's probably a very difficult aspect to do. So whatever model we look at, it is, is going to have to take its time, and as the CA has mentioned, also to look at it from a perspective is, what is the overall impact on everything else that we do if we decided to go with that pilot program?
Thank you, Madam Minister. Thank you, Director. What I heard then was an openness to a pilot, and I heard you mention something, a, a fall, maybe a time limited, at least initial rollout as, as possible, as possible grounds for further conversation.
So, so this is what we will commit to. We will commit to following up with members of the council and members of the committee about next steps. So what I want to be able to have a detailed discussion with the director and the team about is the potential operational impacts, and if we need to do a study first. Should we, you know, do a, actually look at a staffing model, put together a proposal, and bring forward that proposal? I don't want to commit to, yes, we're going to do a pilot, yes, we're going to launch it in the fall, because I actually do think that we need a bit of time to study this, to come up with the right staffing model, to understand the costs that are going to be associated with it, if there are going to be operational impacts on other parts of solid waste. But what you are hearing from me, we absolutely, in this administration, want to move towards curbside composting citywide. I do think that there are steps that need to occur for us to do it in a way that is sustainable and doesn't disrupt our other routine services.
Thank you, Madam CAO. Councilmember Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam CAO. Director, you know, my district has been receiving a bulk of the new infrastructure that's been installed. So, a lot of my questions for this round will be a part of the Office of Engineering and Construction. Similar to what happened, I'm still mindful of the issues that happen with the inspectors. With that being said, how does DPW Office of Engineering and Construction monitor performance and compliance of contractors working on capital projects? And what systems are in place? Because I, again, right my district, and there are areas where there are cold patching that is below grade and well below what the DOT standards are. And we always have to respond to either the project manager or a person within the office to have it repaired. But I think, at the end of the day, as I did two, two summers ago, pulled the records from inspectors being on site, and noticed that there were days when inspectors weren't present. So how are we changing our systems to make sure that inspectors are present, but also that our capital projects are on time and do not have over expenditures?
If you want me also to relate a little bit to the street cuts and, and, and the street cut policy that is established as well. So I'll start with that piece. The, the street cut division or section was, was created during my times in, in, in a DOT, and we created a very robust place in order to take care of some of those issues that we're dealing with. It is, I, I want to be clear that there is a difference between a temporary cut, that is, what is after the contractor comes in and does the cut, and a, put a cold, cold patch in, temporary, until the final repairs come in. And the final repairs could be three to four months, six months after the fact. So when the contractor comes in, he finished the cuts, he install, installed the pipes, and then do what they needed to do in terms of the cold patch. They come back usually in, in a period of time when they do the entire city as a contractor, and they do their permanent repair. So I wanted to make sure that there is a difference between the two.
No, I know the difference, Director. My issue is, in, on Hilton Parkway, I had a sinkhole created, and I had to have fixed by a previous director because the inspector was not present. I pulled the records in Wallbrook Junction, the inspector was not present for seven days. I had a young man who, who fatally died on Falls Road with two, three DPW inspectors and two on-site inspectors from the actual contractor, right? So my question is, how are we training our staff to prevent not only deaths, but also it shouldn't be a bumpy road when we're having all of these issues with your contractors?
Yeah. And, and a big part of it is bringing Steve Sharkey on board. And Steve has taken the lead in terms of creating an internal city stat aspect of it, in which he looks at all these projects, looked at the people, looks at the, at the folks in every aspect of it, and he's digging into it. He's digging into the numbers. And we're getting a little bit more idea what we needed to do. We're looking also at the, at what stuff, and I'm going to have Steve speak to that in, in just a minute. But we're looking at it from a perspective, do we have enough inspectors on the field? If sometimes you're not seeing an inspector, is that the inspector is visiting another site at the time of that visit? Could he be handling two to three? Is that sufficient? If there is a project that is a large project in nature, it needs its own inspector. So Steve, I'd like to add something to that, if you can.
Steve Sharkey, Bureau Head, Water and Wastewater, sorry. Yeah, so we do have, I already have project stat meetings up and running. I meet with every division section under OEC every month at minimum, some every two weeks. We've recently hired five new engineers in-house, as well as six new inspectors. However, I do also agree that the, the inspectors need a lot more training. We are working to get them a formal construction training program that hopefully will be coming up in the next six months or so. So I definitely think that our inspectors need better training and continued increased oversight. And, you know, there, I hear what you're saying, and I want to, and I would love to hear some more of your specifics and see what else you're seeing on the ground, to see if there's things that I'm not seeing as well.
Listen, I would love to go on a ride through my district and we see how many, how many cold patches or how many issues we hit, just in the, I'll give you an example, Matthew A. Henson neighborhood, where we had an issue that was done. I can tell you in Centstown-Wangchester, we had another issue. And I go back to Wallbrook, and I go back to the woman who I had to console when she had a sinkhole in front of her house because of the contractor who was from New Jersey, who left that sinkhole there, and having to walk with her director to have it corrected after I noticed that the inspector did not show up for several days. And this is basically off of your SOPs that I looked, and I literally pulled out a physical calendar from DPW, and I circled every day that an inspector was supposed to be there, and I counted the number of days an inspector did not show up. And this is in your own internal software, and I saw each individual report. So I just want to make sure that, and I say this wholeheartedly, because we're still behind on the contracts that we are executing, I believe we're now executing contracts for water projects in 2018, so there's still going to be over costs and change orders for just the now new standards by DOT. But also the fact that we're talking about the unintended consequences of the damage to people's vehicles and homes when we're not having inspectors making sure that the bare minimum is being reached. And I say that because I will send you a picture where I pulled out a ruler and literally put the ruler down into the cold patch after the actual crew left. And they were done. It was four inches below the grade, and that was after they left. And typically, an inspector is supposed to be there before that happens, right? That didn't happen. So for me, OEC is our biggest liability to me and my district.
One of, one of the things that we have added is we just hired a professional engineer, and probably for the first time, to lead the construction group within DBW, the construction group within DBW, to have a professional engineer leading their group in the OEC. He has a tough job in, in, ahead of him. But is, your point is taken. Again, as Steve said, we'd like to get some of the details, and we'll dig into some of the details that you have, Councilman, and we'll address those issues.
And also to that vein, I know that we've been discussing this for several years across directors. I would like us to really look at how we can do the restoration of our roadways after the water projects in-house, so that we can save money. Because as infrastructure costs are going up and the cost in terms of materials, we might have to add our workforce onto it to save the money on it. But for that, to that vein, I, I'm going to put in a committee request. I would like to know how many change orders were issued across capital projects in FY '24, and what was the total value? The internal costs are in place, and what internal, internal controls are in place to minimize the over costs and ensure physical accountability? Because in hand, and just for the six streets that we had that need to be repaired, it was a $2 million over cost. And it's coordinating with BGE and others to bring that cost down. But I just want to make sure that we're looking wholeheartedly how we can build our capacity. We have labor unions like Launa who can help us with training people to do that house in, in-house. I think we need to really think about it as costs are going up and our budget is getting lower.
Councilman Torrance, one follow-up question regarding the follow-up. Are, when you asked for the value of the change orders, are you specifically talking about the capital projects and the water and the wastewater enterprise funds, or are you talking about all capital projects?
Both, please.
Okay.
I'll allow the director to provide an answer and a response to what you just noted. What I did want to do is take a moment to actually acknowledge some of the research that BBMR has done and work that the OPI team has done recently. So years ago, BBMR actually looked at this very topic, the cost of internal resurfacing versus us leveraging external crews and contractors to support resurfacing. We actually have been working with OPI to look at if, is there opportunities and cost savings if we were to bring more of our resurfacing efforts in-house. Now, of course, we're focused mostly on DOT. But to your point, I think there's an opportunity, and this goes back to the, the new role of this new deputy mayor, because there are synergies, especially now with the requirements, you know, the DOT requirements around curb to curb, you know, depending on how much of the roadway is disrupted. And so I do think, to your point, that there's an opportunity for us to look closer at cost savings with bringing some more of the repaving and resurfacing work in-house. Now, what I do want to say is that what you'll see in the upcoming Orange Cone list and in the current capital budget, we put additional resources into resurfacing. Everyone in this room, everyone in this city knows how significantly we are behind when it comes to resurfacing our roadways. And with the way that we were budgeting, we were 20 miles, 30 miles, and that's not going to cut it. And so, while I do want to save money, if there is an opportunity to bring some of this in-house, when we look at the scale that we need to be resurfacing our roads, we might want to continue to expand in-house capacity and have contractors to support our resurfacing efforts as well. But I just wanted to acknowledge that point.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the topic of complimenting the DPW workforce, it's, I'd like, I'll be honest, like, like every interaction we have with DPW from my office is always, not always, but the significant majority of them are positive. And it, I'm sure it makes your very complex job significantly more feasible to accomplish with the team that you have. The brief point before I get to my questions, I think it was Councilman Parker who brought up the, the composting pilot. To the state administrator's point about doing a study before doing a pilot, I would counter that. I think the point of doing a pilot program is that it's, it's supposed to be temporary, it's supposed to be an opportunity for us to, to learn and move forward. It's, it's like what flex post, to use a transportation analogy. It's what flex posts are supposed to be used for. They're not supposed to be there forever, right? They're supposed to be there to see if the idea works, and then you do the permanent thing. So I, as we're thinking about that, right, I think that's something that I, you know, I hope we are factoring in. Going on to my questions. So first question, I, I think the largest, like, service object line item in the entire city, like in any city agency's budget, is in 675, object eight, the debt, the debt service on water and wastewater. It's a, and it's 180, coming up on 183 million dollars this year, which is actually a, a ton of money, even for like citywide budget, right? And so my first question is, how much, how big is our debt on, like, that's, this is just our annual debt service? What is the debt that, that we owe from revenue bonds on water and wastewater?
How much? Five million? I'm sorry?
Five, five billion?
Five billion, yeah.
Yeah, that, and so that's a whole bunch of money. And how much is the deferred, DPW's total deferred maintenance, estimated deferred maintenance? Do you all know?
Do we have a number? It, it's, yeah. The, the last, the last time I think we were talking about roughly around the, probably the $4 billion number.
Yeah. That, that also sounds right. So we have, so we've had to borrow a lot of money to do the things that are required to make the city a city. And we still are way behind on the things that we need to do to continue allowing the city to be a city. So we're looking at like $10 billion that we either owe or are behind on, just within water and wastewater in DPW. So it, I think this is a bit of a, this just really struck me, and maybe it's more of a comment than a question, and it really goes to the 10-year financial plan and everything, but like, we, as a city, have to, like, that's not, that's the opposite of sustainable. Like, that's, like, we're spending a ton of money just trying to pay this back, right? And so I just, I think that, you know, as a council, as a city, we really have to figure out, you know, growing the population, like, doing all these things that allow us to not be broke forever. You know, I know I've had a couple of conversations with the Mayor's Chief of Staff, where he's, he's pointed out some, you know, potential structural problems with how the state pays us and whatnot. And the whole thing is just like incredibly important. And it just, it just was a huge thing that I wanted to flag from, from seeing that. So, yeah, thanks for having, having those numbers available. So, second question. So bringing, so I think we're projected to spend like 13 million this year for the disposal fee for the, for Willabrator. And it's gone, we've gone from 150,000, it was around 150,000 tons, and now it's 195,000 tons. And obviously, all of this is happening as we are supposed to be reducing the amount of feed, right, trash that we're feeding into the incinerator. So, can you, can you talk me through, first off, why is it, first, why is it growing, and why has it grown so much over the last couple of years? And then, two, you know, outside of the really important thing of raising the tipping fee, like, what are we planning on doing to reduce that number?
And I'll ask Sophia to come in and, and help with that. But is, I'll start by saying it is the amount of investment that we, I go back to the study that we've done. It's obviously something's not working. We're looking at the, we're looking at the volume of recycling, the, the amount of recycling that we've done over the years increased, but the percentage itself is decreasing. So from a tonnage perspective, we're increasing, but is the, the percentage itself is coming down, just simply because people are using a lot more. So, so the study that we're planning on doing and, and, and looking at all the options that we have, understanding the, the issues with the, with Bresco, understanding the issues with the landfill, that is, to give us a better options, to give us things on the table, that is, we could dig into and find out what is the best way to move forward. What is the best sustainable way to move forward? And Sophia, if you have any additions left there.
Okay. And I, I think as a follow-up to, do we have a, a sense of a when that we'd have that study done? Okay, and I I think as a follow-up to, do we have a a sense of a when that we'd have that study done?
We're planning to start the study right now. And we're looking at it as 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 a step one right now. We had it in the budget, it's existing in the previous budget, I think. And and we're looking at it right now to to go ahead and do the study right now before we start spending any money on quarantine road, which is going to be
Sure.
A big, big project.
And that makes sense, but are we talking like three months, six months, two years, like what's the?
Or to start right now, and I would say the study itself to begin with, probably three to, three to four months for the study to begin, roughly.
Well, I mean, for us to have the results, so we know what.
I would say six months to a year.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
All right. First, I just want to shout out you and your team out for all the hard work you do. I think one of the reasons why the work that we're talking about as far as water and wastewater is so challenging is because our infrastructure is is so old. And, you know, and because of that, that makes all of our jobs a lot harder. If it wasn't for water and wastewater, you know, although I'm supposed to be a part-time councilperson, it makes my job as a councilperson full-time dealing with the issues from constituents. But so with that said, I just want to shout out Steve Sharkey. Thank you for helping me out with so many issues. But while I'm here, I want to try to understand some issues I've been trying to tackle for constituents. Just help me understand the program is, I guess, often when someone has a leak, just make sure I got it in their house, and they get it fixed, often for that one month in which they had a leak, there's some kind of recovery or rebate in which, well, after they get it fixed, they can, you know, get some kind of rebate back. So just help me understand, when someone doesn't receive a bill for like, let's say, three months, and all of a sudden, they get a bill and realize within those three months, there was a leak, but they're only willing, but they're only able to get an adjustment for that one month? Like, help me understand, why is that a a policy if if they haven't received a bill for three months? You know, how, so you would think they would be able to get a recovery for the entire three months? Just just thinking on.
I'm back. Toya Sykes, Chief of Customer Support and Services Division. To answer your question, Councilman, we have several policies that address how we provide relief in the form of adjustments when they come to leaks. Your statement is partially true. Depending on the type of leak, there is a policy that directly correlates with how the adjustment is applied. If there is a silent leak or an internal leak, there is a policy that we apply that would allow our staff to look at the highest three bills during the timeframe which that leak was actually active, which we use a formula to calculate the amount of relief that's provided. So it's not one month, it's, we look at the highest three bills during that time period, depending on what type of leak it is.
Okay, because I guess I I see a problem of them being directed to water for all or promise pay when they receive a larger bill than usual because they had a leak. But they hadn't, they would have gotten it fixed a month ago if they would have received the bill. So it's no fault of their own that they've gone three months with this leak. And but then the policy says, well, we're only able to reimburse you for that one month or make adjustment. When in fact, if they would have received the bill regularly like they should, they would have been able to catch it in time.
We encourage our customers, we encourage our customers to, number one, create a profile on our customer self-service portal, which would allow them to track their bill normally, even if they did not receive a bill. I am not saying that them not receiving a bill does not actually present a hardship for them when it comes to paying the bill. However, it would give them the opportunity to track the activity on their utility closely, if that is the case. And again, I'm going to refer back to the fact that it depends on what type of leak it is. Some leaks, which we apply situational adjustment to, we we can't identify if there is a leak or when the leak started, they can't identify it, the plumber can't identify it. So it just depends on the scenario that actually correlates with it. We're always willing to assist the the customer, we're finding some type of resolve for their issue. Depending on what that situation is, we are always willing to work with them. When we refer customers, I want to be very clear about this, to WACA, it's only after we've given them relief and they may not agree with it. We allow them to review the bill again, well, actually, we we review the bill again. And if they would like to appeal it, after the appeal has been denied on C S S Ds in, we then refer them to WACA for additional assistance.
I'd like to offer something in addition on the table, that is, within a community, if you're liking to us. And I know a lot of the customers that we have might be old in age and not very familiar. I agree, I agree a hundred percent. And 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 therefore would love to have the opportunity, the education piece, going back to the education piece as a whole and anything that we do, education piece is to train these people just to look at that specific thing. Everybody has a cell phone by now, everybody has the ability to, if you want to get your community and want us to come over and kind of show those folks how to get to that specific thing in their water bill that they could look at it. So the next time they see an increase or they see something, they could recognize it right away, whether they look at it once a month, look at it once a week, look at it, whatever they need to. So we'll put that in the table. If you're looking, you and other, some of your colleagues want us to come in and show the people, train some of those people how to identify these things and how to get to that specific link and to manage on a regular basis.
Yeah, because I was going to say, because I don't even know how to look it up every, you know, month if I, you know, going into the system, but I will say some of our customers are elderly and don't have it on our account and are used to receiving a bill. And I would say when we don't do our part by ensuring that they get a bill in the mail, because in some sense, they are expecting it, unless we need to tell them, don't expect a bill, you know, then maybe they'll start looking into it. But I would say there are some policies in place that we may need to reconsider when we as a city aren't doing what we're supposed to do on our back end to help bring some kind of relief. And I I just want to say that I'm not going to belabor the point.
Matt Garbark, interim deputy director. One thing I just want to clarify is it's three bills. So if we don't get a bill for three months or so, that's one bill. So it would go cover whatever that period would be. So it's actually three bills. So our, the view has been if, it should be three bills, generally, if it's all billed correctly, it's three months. That should be enough time for someone to realize they have a leak, address it, try to get it fixed. If there's a problem and they don't get the bill, we understand that. So there's still three bills, so if it's a period of time where they didn't get a bill, that counts as just one bill.
So all three months, so if they had three different, I guess, monthly high rates, it'll average out those three months?
So they'd only, no, so you'd only get one bill. If it, if you didn't get a bill for however many months, it just never sends a bill out. So it goes into what you're paying for three months, that counts as one bill.
Okay.
So if if you, the the system is supposed to send the bill out every month. There are exceptions that sometimes throw it if you're high or low. We try to clear them all within the timeframe. If we don't hit it, it kicks it to the next month. If we also don't hit it that month, it kicks it to the next next month. So the bill actually is never sent out. So when it's finally sent out, that counts as just one bill because.
But it has three different months on it.
Three months, so that's still just one, one bill, and then you get the two other bills after that.
So that, those three months, which is one bill, can be completely adjusted?
Yes.
Okay, all right, that's not what they were told.
It's all counted within that period of adjustments, three bills, not three.
So although you receive three separate bills in the mail, essentially, when you do pay it, it's just one bill then?
Our, the the perspective has been that three bills is a very appropriate time for people to realize that they have a problem and that they should be able to get it addressed.
So it can get adjusted, okay, I'll follow up, but thank you. I, um, I guess my second point was, my second question was, just typically, when someone has an issue regarding their water bill or want to contest it or or challenge it, and someone comes out to do an audit and look at it, typically, how long should that take? Because, you know, I I have open constituent queues that I would love to close in my systems.
So I want to make sure I understand your question, Councilman. You are asking what is the timeframe or the S L A that's related to resolving a bill dispute?
Yeah, an investigation where they have to physically come out and and look, and that's.
So C S S D works closely with our meter operations. And we call that, I forgot the name of it, but we work closely with meter operations where when a customer calls in, they want to dispute the bill, the first thing we do is we take a look at the bill. We investigate the account, we see if there are any spikes in the bill or any spikes in the consumption. We request assistance from meter operations to go out and do a meter investigation. Depending on what the results from that meter investigation will predicate how long the S L A is actually going to look like for us to resolve the actual issue. We might have to wait on a meter to be installed, we may have to get U M D involved if there's something wrong with the main line. C S S D's S L A that's associated with resolving the bill dispute itself is between seven to ten days. And that's just for us to be able to do the account investigation and provide some type of rebuttal to the actual constituent. If that answers your question, that does not necessarily mean that the issue or if there is an issue with the meter that is going to be resolved within that timeframe.
Okay, no, that 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 absolutely answers my question, but I would love to work with you on how to close some of them out, because I have some that's been open for weeks.
If you, if you have a list of accounts that you want to forward over to our office, we'd be happy to take a look at it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Director, I want to specifically look at line item six seventy-three wastewater management. Just reviewing, oh, is the director here?
He ran to the men's room, we're happy to continue, yes.
Thank you, so maybe you can answer this question. I noticed that there was a six percent increase in chemical supplies. Can you share the specific chemicals that are driving that that increase to ten point three million?
Absolutely, yes. We have seen a significant spike in many of our chemicals, especially some of the more specialized ones that require extensive refining. They're usually produced by a very limited number of suppliers, so that's where the costs generally do spike. I'm going to ask our deputy bureau head for water and wastewater, Mike Holman, to explain that a little more and go into some of those details.
And sir, in your explanation, can you talk through the cost through, talk through the evaluation of cost estimates, because I have a follow-up question to that as well.
All right, thank you, Michael Holman, I'm the deputy bureau head for water and wastewater. The the cost of chemicals has gone up tremendously, you know, there was the impacts that happened from COVID. And then there is any pending.
Regulatory changes.
Sorry about that, any any other pending changes that that are coming? We actually received a notification here lately for potential cost increases in in terms of tariffs. One premier example of of chemical cost increases goes along with our methanol. Our methanol is used as a carbon source for our denitrification process, which is absolutely critical in meeting our permit requirements. And that cost alone has gone up two hundred and thirty percent. So where we were spending just over three million dollars, you know, about four years ago, you know, our methanol costs alone this year are are upwards of eight to eight and a half million dollars. And that's just a single chemical. We use, I haven't done a whole count, about six or seven different chemicals within the wastewater treatment process, and they have all experienced similar cost increases.
One of the reasons why I asked that question, and and I'm grateful that you shared methanol, are there any alternatives that we can be using? I think that there, this this is an opportunity, if there is some sort of alternative that we can be using to divert some of those funds in preparation for zero waste and other areas that we could be using that surplus from that increase?
That is a loaded question. From a technical aspect, there are alternative chemicals that we could look at as potential carbon sources. But the use of methanol is is preferred, mostly due to the effectiveness within the treatment process. For those that may not be familiar, our permit levels are extremely low. With at Back River and at Patapsco, you're talking about nutrient, nitrogen removal's got to be less than four parts per million or four milligrams per liter. And with those numbers being that extremely low, obviously, you want to go with the best potential product you have to give you the the best output that you can. There, again, there are, there are alternatives that are out there that may be a bit cheaper from a production standpoint, but they would all have to be evaluated. And they, I mean, when we first put the enhanced nutrient removal process in place and doing the design, we did look at alternatives and due to potential costs, but it was really nice when methanol was a dollar sixty-three a gallon.
And so, and so the reason why I bring that up, from a biochemical perspective, that report that you're talking about, I actually had a chance to review it, and the alternatives, I'm thinking of like where we can utilize some of those alternatives for cost savings. Have we revisited or even reevaluated that report in our current financial landscape?
Not specifically in terms of chemicals, but looking at our process in general and how we can improve our nitrification and denitrification within our process areas prior to the denitrification facility. So within our reactors and within our activated sludge areas, there are some mechanical processes and maybe additional dissolved oxygen. There's some diff, there's some different operational changes we can make to save specifically on chemicals, but there is going to be a cost offset there. You know, my electric bill's going to go up a little bit more if I have to start adding, you know, more mixers and or blowers, et cetera. So there's a real cost benefit analysis to that.
And and the reason also is I'm I'm trying to see if the evaluation of the cost benefit actually mirrors the trade-off on the back end, so the inputs and outputs into that system. So thank you so much for the clarification. I'll save my next questions for the next round.
Thank you. Thank you for the science lesson, Michael. So, and and by the way, Director, I want to thank, publicly thank, Michael and and Steve. They've been doing a great job tag teaming the the water stuff. And so, you know, we we all bug them all times of day and night, and they're very responsive, and I appreciate that. And I know where Michael lives because he's a constituent, so he he answers right away. So my first question is, can you discuss a little bit about the rate increases, the nine percent year over year? We're we're getting complaints from constituents about just simply not being able to afford it. And that coupled with the increase in B G E bills. Can you just explain why we need that nine percent increase? And when, if ever, it will ever end from increasing?
So, so the increase that is going to happen this Gen, July first, is nine percent, nine percent, and three percent. Nine percent for water, nine percent for wastewater, and three percent for stormwater. And you're looking at three things, mostly there are the reasons why we have to do this and we do this on a regular basis. One is inflation. Second is compliance. And third is all the capital projects that we need to deal in order to fix all the infrastructure that we need to fix. So i- i- if you're looking at inflation and just the rate of inflation itself is far exceeds what we have done in the previous three years. What we have done in the previous three years are three percent, three percent, and 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 three percent, which is, it it didn't meet the the inflation rate just alone. So it is, it is great while it's lasted, but at some point right now that we needed to take care of what we need to take care of. And that is, the second issue I I I I need to mention is the, in addition to the inflation, it's the capital project that we have, and the additional, the the number of the capital project that we have to deal with in order to get us to the point. That's capital project cost right now is roughly three, thirty percent more than what it used to be to be pre-COVID. So it is, and the third and the last option we saw is the compliance. And the compliance, as as Michael have mentioned, just the cost of chemicals itself, to meet that compliance, it is now, some of those chemicals are two hundred percent, three hundred percent more of what it cost pre-pandemic.
So so when does it end?
It it, the increase is going to be, we're going to have this increase, we know, for the next three years. And we're going to evaluate it in 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 where the situation. And we're going to evaluate it in where the situation is in 2027 and figure out there will be an increase and at minimum will be the inflation increase. But what is that, whether it's going to be beyond the inflation rate at that point? It depends on where the financial situation of the enterprise will be by then.
Right, I mean, we're definitely exceeding inflation when it comes to 9% annual increases. But, you know, when you were talking about like the capital projects, that's really, that's like unlimited, right? I mean, you could, you can do capital projects. I mean, ask BGE, they're doing it all day, every day. So I mean, you technically can do the same thing with the water system. So like, does there become a certain point where we're saying, okay, this current level of funding gets us what we need to handle what's going on and plus the maintenance? And we're going to just stop doing it? Because, you know, if we continue down this path, it's already getting to that point where it's unaffordable for folks. And it's going to be impossible for people to pay their bills.
I'll go back and argue the point that is, the reason why we're in this point is that because it's been neglected for so many years before. You know, for many, many years before, for this system, it is, it's like you're building your car. If you haven't invested in your car to change the oil and do whatever you need to do over the years, that car is going to fall apart very quickly. And that's what happens to our infrastructure. It's 100 years of, until really, until the consent decree. You know, our investment in our infrastructure was non-existent. And now we have to do all of that to make up for all the time that is, we haven't done it in the past. And now I tell you, if we don't invest, if we don't do the capital projects, the 600 water main break that happens in January, five years down the line, you're going to have probably triple or quadruple that number. Guess why? Because you need to fix all these water lines, you need to fix all that infrastructure that hasn't been done. Because if you neglect it and you decide I'm not going to do it, it's going to just fall apart.
Gotcha. And then my second question is around collections. We spoke about this in previous hearings. There's a lot of money outstanding there. There's really no consequence not to pay your water bill. So what are we doing about that?
Multiple things. Let me start with the commercial, with the easy part, the commercial piece, right? So the commercial piece, what we have collected roughly is $72 million deaths in less than a year period of the commercial. And that is roughly probably 45 to 48% of the entire commercial outstanding amount. So we have roughly another 75, 78 million dollars still outstanding in the commercial piece. We took a big chunk out of the commercial piece and we continue to work on it. The additional, that 78%, the additional 75 million dollars that is left, this is, I would say, a lot of smaller account. It's going to take a longer period of time in order to get to that point. We're looking at the other part, which is the public or the homeowners. And that's a little bit more difficult piece to dig into. But we're looking for options, we're looking for ways to get to it and see what is the next step we're probably going to do in order to attack that piece. But it's, taking over the commercial piece is going to take a big chunk out of that.
So what is the total amount that is in the rears? Like not, I'm not talking about like, you know, a month behind, but like stuff that's actually old? You know, past 90 days or such?
We have the audited piece, which is like on an annual basis. We're looking at roughly 207 million.
And that's over a year old?
That is over, this is at any point, right? At any point you're looking at is an average, we looked at a picture of it, what is, what is the audited amount? Now, qualify that as the audited amount. So it is roughly 207 million dollars.
Gotcha. And so do we have any like listing of, from that audit of people who just haven't paid anything?
We have a list, obviously we know who pays and who doesn't pay. And so we identified, like what we did when we did with the commercial piece, we looked at it as the biggest hits. And those are the people that we started with, the biggest amount. We started with the over million dollars amounts and we collected that and we went after them and we were able to get to it. So, and now we're going down the line from that step by step to getting to the a little bit larger, smaller amount, but those numbers are larger and many of them.
Gotcha. And so this 9% increase, how much money is that going to generate this year, estimated?
Roughly, we look at it, we look at every 1%, and I'll ask Aaron to correct me if I'm wrong. Roughly, every half a percent is roughly a million dollars, if I'm correct. So every half a percent you think of it is, so 18 million.
So 18 million. So this, I mean, this stuff that's in the rear, that if we're looking at 18 million being the annual increase, which obviously it goes up even above that every year because it's on a larger amount. So instead of, if we just collect this money, that's 11 and a half years of increases. I mean, if we just collect the money that's owed to us, we essentially won't need to be raising rates.
I'll add an additional perspective here and then the Director can close us out on this topic. So I want to make sure that the Director and team are able to respond with where our collection rate is in comparison to other jurisdictions and national standards and kind of best practices around collections. We are not that far off from where national standards are when it comes to our collections for our water utility. So I do want the team to talk a little bit more about that. In addition, we have been very, very aggressive about collections in this administration. And so the team that Toya Sykes runs and has stood up, that is the collections team, right? And that is a new entity within the Department of Public Works because we wanted to be more aggressive about going after debt that is owed to the city. And so now we actually have a dedicated team that is out there going after any outstanding debt that is owed to the city, working with people on the accuracy of their water bills. We did not have the Collections Bureau Division before and now we have that additional capacity. But I do want the Director to talk about our collections rates as they compare to other standards.
So, I mean, I'm not really interested in the, like the other jurisdictions. I'm really just focused on Baltimore. But just to that, to that point.
I think it's important, this isn't even just about other jurisdictions, it's about what you can collect. So as a part of, and this is even when we have conversations with the rating agencies, you are unlikely to ever collect 100% of the debt that is owed to you. And so there are assumptions that are built into our collections model. And these are also assumptions that are shared with our rating agencies whenever we meet with them annually about our utility bonds. So I do think that it's important that we are very clear about the outstanding debt and how it compares to what the standards are for the industry.
So as far as like collections go, why would a property that's valued under 250,000 or whatever the level that they're removed from tax sale, why would they pay their water bill if there's not going to be, you know, fees and stuff associated with it? If they're underwater on their house, why not just, why just not pay? Which obviously some people are doing because that's 140 million dollars in residential properties that are not, that are not paying. So what is pushing them to pay?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's a very good question. And I think we are happy to have a discussion about different enforcement or collections mechanisms, right? That is something that we can have a conversation with this body. But we should talk about what that looks like in a city like the city of Baltimore and how we have chosen to be more judicious when it comes to water, when it comes to water shut offs, for example. There are different strategies that other cities and other utilities employ when it comes to collection of water. Again, I mentioned the shut offs and the forced shut offs. That is not something that we do, that is not a practice of the city of Baltimore. If that is something that this body wants to consider, then of course there's a conversation to be had. But we should also talk about the downstream impacts of us doing forced water shut offs, knowing the challenges that many of our residents face. But there are lots of tools in the toolbox that we can, again, have conversations with this body about the different enforcement mechanisms and strategies that we can put in place. There's also, you know, turning bills over to collections agencies. That is not a practice that we currently employ. And so, again, I think it does require a more fulsome debate and discussion about different strategies that we might be open to employing as a city. But we also should be prepared to talk about the impact on some of our most vulnerable residents.
Thank you. Next up, Councilman Gray.
Thank you. Director, the city administrator mentioned earlier today that there was a time where we lacked the fleet capacity to reliably deliver basic services like street sweeping, recycling and trash collection. I would like to hear more about the concrete steps you've taken to modernize DPW's fleet and strengthen the delivery service. At the same time, I must admit that I am concerned that there was a $5.3 million allocation specifically for outsourcing mechanical street sweeping. Why are we outsourcing such a service at such a significant cost when those dollars can be potentially built, used to build internally? To create local jobs for our city government and hire people from Baltimore?
Yep, it is really the mayor who invested all that money more than anybody else. And as a long-term city employee and city resident, and I said that multiple times, actually. I haven't been, but I haven't seen a single administration in the past that have invested as much as this administration and this mayor in the fleet and in facilities that we have seen. We're looking at state of the art. We're looking at a fleet in Baltimore City that used to be 12 years old and 15. You find vehicles that are 15 years old. Now we're looking at our fleet roughly 40 years old. And by the time we're done with all the vehicles that we have, whether it's on routine services or street sweeping, by the time it will be completed, we'll probably be a year or two old. Looking back, going back to your question about street sweeping, it's, as I said, we have roughly right now, we're going to have the entire fleet done by the time we get all 34, all 34 street sweeping vehicles that we ordered. Now we have 11 out of those, so we don't have the total amount. We have a fleet right now of 39 in which 21 of those 39 are working at any point, roughly 20 to 21. Roughly 50%, 54, 55%. So we need to supplement that with a contract. And that's why the contract that we have is $5 million per year for two years to allow us. We're planning to have all these vehicles, the new vehicles will be onboard. We have the drivers, so the driver's not an issue. We'll have the new vehicles, we'll have the spare vehicles by then. And we will not have a contract. We have an MS4 permit that we need to meet in order to get a lot of these streets swept. So this contract will help us to get to the point when all the rest of the vehicles are onboard, are with us at that time.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know that the cavalry, the Baltimore City Cavalry is coming instead of us continuously outsourcing and hiring people from outside when we can train up and provide the best service from the bright, the best and brightest of Baltimore City. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Morales. All right. Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to follow up on the zero waste question. You guys are probably tired of hearing about this. One request I want to make with regard to that was, we talked about the enhancement requests from DPW. Would you mind sharing that enhancement request? I'd love to see exactly what was sort of ironed out in the request. And can you share that in the next two days?
Yeah. The request itself, you mean?
Yes. Yeah.
Those documents are pre-decisional documents, the budget request documents. So we can summarize what was in the request, we're not going to share the full request.
Why not?
Because they are pre-decisional documents that the administration holds and it's under the purview in terms of what is shared from them.
Thank you so much for that question. So this is what we'll provide to you. So you're interested in knowing what DPW requested as far as the zero waste program that they put forward to the administration? That's essentially what you're looking for. So what we will provide to you all is the high level summary of the whatever, the $4 million that DPW requested. We'll just outline the details, some of the details around that request. So we'll provide you at a high level the summary.
I'll explain what I'm looking for and how it helps me. So, Madam C, you mentioned the prospect of doing a study. And that felt unsatisfying for me. You probably saw me talking with my colleague about it. It felt unsatisfying, I think, in part because we have the Less Waste Better Baltimore Plan that has been already out there for five years or so. And doing an additional study didn't quite scratch the itch, I think, as far as what we're looking for, especially with the timeline, with a 2030 expiration of the Bresko contract. So I think I want to understand what our current, you know, I think we're thinking about the issue, but we're not doing anything about the issue. And in order to do something about the issue, we need to talk about the plans that we have on the table and the feasibility of those plans. So I was curious, what's the plan? And, you know, what are we looking at by way of staff? What are we thinking about by way of implementation? Is it scalable? Is it something that starts small and then gets big? Or is it something that starts big and may or may not do well? So having a sense of the plan from that regard is helpful. Doing a study, while I appreciate the offer to do so, I'm not sure that that necessarily adds much to the.
So, yeah, and I appreciate that. I think, and this goes back to some comments that I made earlier about us being very intentional when it comes to implementation of new systems, as well as in this case, a new service. This is a service that the Scott administration wants to offer the citizens and the residents of the city of Baltimore. But we want to be thoughtful and deliberative about how we put forward that service. And so this is what I'll offer as far as, and again, we can continue the engagement and discussion about what implementation of a pilot looks like. We are not going to have a pilot come September. I just want to be very clear with this body. Could we have a pilot by spring? Possibly, but I don't want to commit to a pilot by spring until I understand the operational impacts of implementing a curbside composting pilot. I've seen it PG County, DC, New York. I've been monitoring and I know the team at DPW and we've been having conversations for some time around what it would look like to do the curbside composting right here in the city of Baltimore. But as the Director talked about, our priority, of course, was around routine services and stabilizing routine services. We can do both and we can be more aggressive when it comes to composting in the city. But my challenge with making the commitment here and now without fully understanding the operational impacts is I don't want to put us in a position where we're compromising on other services. So that's why I want to take a little bit of time. And I see the concern. And I'm hopeful that it won't compromise other services. But again, as city administrator, I want to be very deliberative about the steps that we take before I commit that I'm going to put another service on to DPW when they're just at a point where they're stabilizing routine services. But to your request of what you want, you want to see, DPW's been thinking about this. That means they've thought about the staffing that would be required to do it. They thought about the overall infrastructure and how they would be able to get this done. And you want to see what they've thought about.
Exactly.
And I think we can summarize that and provide you that information.
All right, and I think ultimately what we're all working toward here is I think we want to see real progress and not in the 27 budget.
Right, I hear you. Let us see.
If we can figure out how to get that to happen, I think that's ultimately what we'd like to see.
So I just want to do some homework over the next couple of days to see what we are able to commit ourselves to. That is realistic. And, but I'm willing to, you know, huddle with the team and see and continue the discussions with members of the council.
I appreciate that, thank you. Maybe we'll just commit to finding some time over the next week and a half to figure out what that looks like. Thank you. I'm going to dig into performance measures. I noted a couple of things in Service 662. And I can go through a number of services, but this one immediately jumped out to me. One. One, that being a big one here, and that's the number of rat burrows baited. In 2021, it was 37,000. 2022 was 32,000. '23, it dropped down to 19,000. '24, it was 19,000. The target for '25 was 30,000. We don't have the actuals yet. And the target for '26 has now dropped to 20,000. I'm curious what we're thinking about here. I would suggest, you know, anything we can do to address rats across the city is certainly appreciated. It's one of those things that... There's like a pride to addressing this issue here. So, can you talk to me about, one, what's going on? Why are we seeing a reduction in rat burrows baited? And why we decided to ultimately reduce the target here?
Okay, so, the goal of the rat rubout program is to eliminate rats throughout the city. And when we see a reduction of rat burrows, that means that the plan is working. So, that's what we want to see. We want to see inspections go up, so our proactive inspections should go up. And the number of rat burrows that we find on those inspections should decrease because the program is working. Now, do we still see rats around? Yes. But when we go out, we inspect these alleys, we inspect residential areas, public areas, we don't see as many rat burrows because, one, the poisons are working, two, we just started a pilot program in two neighborhoods for the Contra Pass. So, if that works, then we should see a further reduction because the Contra Pass is like a rat birth control. So, it doesn't kill it, but it will, you know, stop them from reproducing. So, all of those efforts by the rat rubout team, which they're doing a wonderful job, is the reason why you're gonna see the number of rat burrows continue to decrease. But like I said, the number inspections should increase, and what we're finding should decrease.
Thank you. That explanation helps a ton because you're right. Inspections from 2021 to now, 2024, have gone up almost more than double. And we have a higher target now for inspections, proactive inspection. So, it's good to see. And I'm glad to hear that the innovations on that are going well. There were two more questions about the, or two more performance measures that kind of jumped out to me. That was the number of cleaning requests completed on time that, you know, hovered from 50, excuse me. Cleaning requests completed on time and boarding requests completed on time that hovered in the, you know, 40% to 50% for both of them. In 2024, we got to 100%. I, that's great if we did it. It just seems a little... The odds of us getting it all done 100% on time suggested to me one of two things. Either that's incorrect and it's an estimation, or we need to maybe potentially be a little more aggressive on the timeline that we set for ourselves. So, I'm curious about what's going on for both of those two performance measures. This is the percent of cleaning requests completed on time and the percent of boarding requests completed on time.
Okay, so, the cleaning request, that's cleaning of vacant properties and vacant lots and also mowing. So, we do have, we increased the number of crews there. That's why you see the performance doing better there. So, we had eight crews for many years. We now have 12 crews, and we have the help of a vendor that's helping us during the mowing season. So, we get more service requests during April through October. And to try to keep up with that, we had to get more crews and then also that vendor's help. The boarding, I'll have to look into that one 100, the 100%. Bell, do you want to say anything? I'm gonna ask Chief Bell. He manages that property management section to provide more information.
Good evening, Council. We...
Can you just say your name?
Sorry about that. Guy Bell, Chief of Property Management Division. Our boarding crews, we put another crew together, so we went up to three crews. And our goal is to close the boarding on time, and that's just what was happening. We're going out and closing the boarding requests. It's just that simple.
Look, that's great. If we're really hitting 100%, that is phenomenal. And I would suggest we maybe learn from that. If we're not exactly hitting that, I would just maybe take a second look at it and make sure. But if the additional crew has made all the difference in making sure that we actually meet the standards that we set to constituents, that's phenomenal, and I'm glad to hear that the additional crew helped out.
Well, I just, on that one, so the 57% was in FY 2021, which was the pandemic year.
Right.
So, it is likely that we either paused on the service or we shifted those resources to other parts of the organization. And then, the percent of the cleaning requests that are completed on time, that I think in FY '24, Director Larson was pointing out, that's where the additional crews came in that were able to start to drive compliance higher.
Okay. Yeah, if we could just...
And I'll get...
I hope this is just like a massive win for us.
I get where you're going, because I was interested in it too. So, I think there are a couple of things, and you all can talk about this with OPI, the SLAs themselves. So, I will have BBMR and/or OPI to kind of pull the trend data around the SLA just to see if there were shifts in the SLA, like the time to actually complete the service. And then, we'll just look to see and to confirm what my theory is, which is pandemic year, low compliance, and additional crews in FY '24. But we'll look deeper to make sure that we actually are realistically doing, hitting 100% when it comes to cleaning and boarding requests.
Yeah. And the only reason I ask these kind of questions is because I think the way my mind works, our performance measures either tell us one or another thing about our budgeting. Looking at the budget from 2024 to 2026, we're looking at it going from 11 million to 16 million. Does the additional support and funding make a big difference in outcomes and deliverables? And so, maybe that is the case here, and if that is the case, phenomenal. I think a case that we could use to maybe look at other agencies and see where it is appropriate and where the need is. If it's not exactly that, it just helps to know, so we can tell forward.
The other thing here, and there's, again, it's a lot of nuance and a lot of things that could be contributing to this. So, there's also the addition of Clean Core. And what is it, the 16 plus? I forget the number of neighborhoods. They've expanded past 16 now. They do, they actually do cleaning and boarding as well. So, those are properties that used to be DPW's responsibility that are now being handled by these neighborhood cleaning crews through Clean Core. And so, that could have lifted the capacity for DPW to now be able to complete more of these requests on time. So, we would have to look at a little bit of, do a little bit of analysis to see if that is something that is contributing to DPW being able to raise their compliance.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to emphasize a little bit on the mowing piece. And I think we realized last year that we not struggled, but we had some difficulties last year. And the increase of crews this year, plus the increase of an additional vendor, will help us tremendously.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bell, for getting it done. Thank you. Next up, Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to turn back a long time ago. Councilman Gray asked about sewage backups. And Director, you shared some really, and your team shared some really interesting things, including alluding to an announcement agreement that will come out soon, and I recognize that. Yes, I hope so is what, we share the same hope. I just wanted to think, I mean, you alluded to it, but am I to understand, or we to understand, just clarifying that that would involve greater than $2 million of resources? It's aiming that direction, more resources rather than less towards it?
Again, without getting to the details of it, I would say into, it fits our commitments. And I'll go back to, there are three ways of doing it. One, it's capacity, wet weather capacity. And that's what we've been doing in the past. And that's why the number is very small. Then you have all wet weather, and then you have wet weather plus dry weather. The dry weather piece, again, is a dry weather piece. It is a piece that is more of an insurance plan than anything else. And again, without getting to the details of it, it is the commitment with, it's at least meeting, we're gonna be meeting our modified consent decree obligations.
I appreciate that and understand the dance you're doing there. Along with those lines then, so, if it's not a, if that's the financial aspect, in terms of the wet/dry, we expect some movement on that. We expect more people will be able to receive services because of some changes to how their claims are evaluated. Great, that's perfect. Thank you for that. In terms of street sweeping, I want to, thank you all. I've seen, I know, we've come a long way looking at 661 in the performance metrics from, you know, 2021, an actual of 13K, up to 82,991 in 2024, and continuing to increase. I know the contracted additional services came online earlier this year. I've seen them out and about in the district and around the city. So, thank you all for prioritizing that. One thing we've noticed is that both regular crews and contracted crews have had a hard time truly cleaning because of cars parked in the roadway. And so, we've been speaking with DOT about the transportation enforcement aspect of that. I'm curious, as you measure performance and effectiveness of your crews, both in-house and contracted, and you're looking at these number of miles swept, do you also track how many miles weren't completely swept because you couldn't really get to it because there were cars parked there?
I'll take it. So, while the team deliberates, we'll talk more about this. So, this is an issue that has come up a lot. And it has come up from members of the council, as well as from residents. And it's one of the issues that we've been addressing through Clean Stat. Actually, it actually came from Mr. Emmanuel, who is a 50-year-plus driver of one of the sweepers, that told me that parking wasn't doing their job, and that's why he couldn't sweep. And so, we started digging into what that meant and trying to work better with DOT. And the director can talk about his coordination directly with DOT so that we're strengthening removing those vehicles and towing those vehicles and citing those vehicles. Broader than that, I would like for Yvonne to also talk through what our efforts are because there's this, there are the posted routes, and then there are the non-posted routes. There are the quadrants, right? So, we're doing a complete overhaul of the street sweeping program and updating the signage. Some of the areas that are not being swept, there's no signage there, right? And so, there's a process, an engagement process that you have to go through in order to get the community sign up and to be willing to put the signs. But there are some streets that just won't get swept because there's not signs there and people are leaving their vehicles. So, it's an extensive process that we're going through. But I did want to acknowledge that the challenge is very much real, and it's one that we're taking head-on. But Director, Yvonne?
Just to answer your question, and just trying to figure it out. And the answer is yes to your question, that we track both. And Yvonne can go into a little bit of details on the, on the regular meetings that we do right now. We have Clean Stat led by the CA on a regular basis that is really digging into the details of this. And we're going into meetings with DOT. And now, we got to the point where we have specific areas that we say, this is the area we're gonna be targeting this week, and this is where DOT needed to be addressing. And they go ahead, and they go ahead of us. And we go behind them on making sure that these issues are addressed. Yvonne, if you want to add anything to that?
I just want to, just to add that, you know, so we have the posted routes that are Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And on Wednesday, we have the quadrant routes. Only 10 of the quadrant routes are posted. Everything else is a volunteer voluntarily to move your car. Our communications team is working on a yard sign that you can put out. We used to have them a few years ago so that communities that want to have street sweeping on Wednesday, they can put those signs out so everyone can move their vehicles. That's a temporary fix until we're able to work with the communities to request, you know, so that everyone can request to have the signs put up. Not all communities want the signs. But the ones that do want signs, we want to make sure that we get those petitions signed, get back, and then DOT can put the signs up, and we can add them to the route.
Thank you all. My last question to do with 663, wastewater and recycling. Just two of the footnotes there on the bottom page 309. The first footnote mentions $5 million to fund contracted haulers and then transitioning midway through the fiscal year to 15 new crews in place for summer 2026. The bottom, the second footnote mentions 2.2 million to fund 10 crews, transitioning from ARPA to general fund. Is there overlap there? Or those, I mean, in the end, by the time we get to summer 2026, are we talking about 25 funded crews between those two footnotes?
Those are separate items. So, in the fiscal '24 budget, the city created 20 crews in order to stabilize and support the transition to weekly recycling. In fiscal '24, 10 of those crews were funded in the general fund. 10 of those crews were funded through ARPA. And so, what you see in the fiscal '26 budget is the 10 that were previously ARPA-funded are being transitioned on a recurring basis to the general fund. So, those crews already exist. They're part of the staffing model that exists today. They're filled, they're operating. And so, the $5 million is on top of what was done in the previous budgets.
Right, and so, that will turn, so 10 are transitioning from ARPA to general funds, matching the 10 that already made that transition. And then, there's 15 new ones that will come in to replace the contracted haulers by next summer.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
You good? All right, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Zaid, how much has been expended on workers' comp in FY 2025 for both wastewater and solid waste?
I don't have that number right now, but we can get it back to you. I don't have the number.
I can provide that. So, one thing about workers' comp is that those amounts in individual agency budgets, they get built by BBMR based off of an actuarial study that is completed. And so, and then, once those rates get built into the budgets, every year, they get booked at the full budgeted amount. So, they're not tied to actual, so let's say, you know, my service, there was, let's say, there was an injury that had a significant workers' comp claim in one year. You're not gonna see that spike in one year. It's gonna end up getting smoothed in based off of how the actuary factors that into the risk moving forward. So, if we look at the Department of Public Works, Workers' Compensation Budget for fiscal '26, it's three point, just under $3.2 million. $833,000 of that is coming from the general fund. $3,400 is coming from a special revenue fund. $169,000 is coming from the stormwater utility. Just over $1 million is coming from the wastewater utility, and $1.1 million is coming from the water utility.
Got it. Thank you for that, Madam Director. The reason I ask is, both because we know that workers' comp has been an issue within the agency, both in terms of sanitation workers. In a previous hearing, we discussed sanitation workers receiving pretty miniscule workers' compensation when they get hurt. But also, the amount of injuries. And so, I know, again, there's active negotiation with the bargaining units, so I'm not gonna ask what the number is gonna end up being. But I'm going to assume that we are going to, through these negotiations, ultimately compensate our workers that get hurt in a more just way.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? I want to make sure that I fully understand the question.
Yeah, sure. That, one of the concerns that we heard from sanitation workers was that the, when they get hurt, that their compensation is pretty... when they get hurt, that their compensation is pretty miniscule. Wanted to understand, and again, I know you're negotiating, so I don't want to, you know, peel back the curtain on that. But I do want to make sure that we are both supporting increased base salary for our frontline folks, but also that they're able to get adequate workers' comp when they get hurt.
Got it. Thank you so much for the question. Let me, I hear that feedback. Let me take that back and have a conversation with our risk management team as well as the Labor Commissioner. So I just want to look a little bit deeper into how our workers' compensation is calculated.
Okay. Can we get back to that within forty-eight hours?
Yeah, let me just, I'll let you know if I can get to forty-eight hours, but I'll have some conversations tomorrow so I can better understand how that's calculated and then follow up with you.
Okay. That would be great.
I'll follow up with you by the end of the week on the status of my conversations. Just, I'll, yeah, on the status of the conversations, anything further, we can discuss at the end of the week.
At the end of the week. That works. Thank you, City Administrator. And then could, this one may also go to you as well, Administrator Leach. The new heat safety plan, clearly it's gonna be hot this summer. I think we're gonna, through the global warming, increasingly see hot summers and we've talked and you've mentioned scaling this to all agencies. Could you provide a concise explanation for the council of what it is gonna look like, particularly from a sanitation, solid waste perspective? Because I know that this, again, was a point of contention for in the IG report, in the really unfortunate death of Mr. Silver. You mentioned earlier, there's, you know, part of the ongoing negotiation with, I believe, AFSMI and the other bargaining units. But could we talk a little bit about what the heat safety standards are going to look like for DPW moving forward?
I'll start with that and this. It is, it is a completely different game changer. So we'll start with, it is now all the supervisors, the moment the temperature hits ninety or a hundred degrees, we all get, everybody gets a text to their phones saying, hey, it's about eighty degrees, it's ninety degrees, a hundred degrees. And there is, at ninety degrees, we're required. And this is, this is not only for the city, but this is the private sector. Everybody's required to provide your workers ten minutes break every two hours. That is ten minutes every two hours when it hits ninety degrees. When it hits a hundred degrees, and I'm talking about the heat index, and I'm not talking about a temperature.
Hey, Director, I'm just gonna stop you there for a quick minute because we've had some challenges, I know, in the past with, so at the supervisory level, making sure that folks get adequate breaks. Could you just describe how that part is gonna work? Because it's felt like there's been
Sure.
a breakdown.
So, so the intent here, at least at the beginning, is what are we gonna have? It is just to make sure that these guys, when it hits ninety degrees, the supervisors will get the text message. Now the supervisors will be required to meet these folks, and I'm talking about the people for routine services, to meet him on the field. So each one of those supervisors might have, and we had that discussion, whether that's effective, whether that's the right way to do it. But at the beginning, in order to make sure everybody does it, we feel that we need to make sure everybody understand that and everybody respect that new regulation. So at that point, so every supervisor who's responsible of five to six crews will have his crews meeting. He or she will have their crews meeting at a specific location and say, hey, it is ten minutes right now. Everybody takes a break. Everybody watching, everybody just to making sure that is nobody is in need of assistance or in need of help at that point. When it hits, again, it hits a hundred degrees heat index, this requirement becomes now fifteen minutes every hour. And that's a big challenge from an operational perspective. It's a challenge specifically for routine services because these guys have the, the interest of finishing as soon as possible. So it is gonna be on us, on the supervisor, on the agency, to make sure that is, slow down, take a break. And we're gonna need the enforcement of that piece in order to make sure that they follow this rule. Another thing that it comes in, the acclimatization piece, which is, is saying if someone is a new employee or coming back to work, it need to be acclimated to the new environment that he or she is coming to. And again, that is, will take a period of time. They have to start with the first day they're back, they only could do twenty percent. The second day is forty percent. Sixty percent until they get to the point where they can come back. So that's in addition to all the other requirements, all the other protocols that we put in place to make sure that is people are following these rules and regulations and we're going by. Is everything's gonna go perfect? No, it's not. I don't expect it, but we want to make sure it goes as close to perfect as we possibly can. We're gonna have some people that is driving the ball one time or another, but we're gonna be dealing with these issues as they come around.
Okay. I'm gonna be looking closely at how that works, just the, from supervisor gets the text to frontline workers actually take a ten-minute break. We know that, you know, one of the things we saw when we were out there was like the incentive is to finish as fast as possible, right? Folks want to go home. And so I would imagine getting them to stop for ten minutes is like a, will be
A task.
A task.
A task. And we acknowledge that. I mean, we looked at it from all other ways. And what are we gonna do in order to make sure? And I'll tell you, this is not probably the most productive aspect of it. And maybe through the process, we'll find better ways to do it. And we can look at other ways that we're gonna do it, but to, we need to put an emphasis. We need to make sure that people understand that taking a break is not an option at that point.
And you're gonna hold the supervisors accountable?
Definitely. We're gonna hold, we're gonna hold the supervisors responsible. We're gonna hold the, the driver responsible. Because the driver is also, is a person that is, you know, have, he's the captain of that ship at that point as well. So we're gonna be holding everybody responsible. Now we have GPS on those vehicles and you could say that is, you could track it that way. But we want to make sure more eyes on the people. More eyes on the person. I don't want just the two people that are with the truck, with, that are, the three people that are on the truck are the one who are watching the thing. I wanted other people from outside coming in saying, hey, this guy doesn't look right. There is something wrong there. And just, we want to make sure that is we identify these things. And again, I'm not gonna promise perfection here because we're far from it. But we're gonna make sure that these things are implemented and we have a process in place.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And we tested twice. Two days already of this year, that's correct, he's reminded me. We tested already. Not a perfect, but it's, we have done it and we have done it on a trial. One day the temperature runs even below the ninety degrees and we decided we're gonna go ahead and test it anyway as a test day and the next time.
Understood. Know that that is something that council members are gonna be looking out for.
Oh, of course.
And we'll be paying close attention to the feedback from the workers. Last question for me, Mr. Chair. I know there's a challenge around the opt-in function of healthcare for sanitation workers. I know that's something that the IG had lifted up in her report. And I know you made an effort to get a number of folks their health insurance. Where are we at on that? How many, what percent of the workforce is now insured?
It's incredible. And credit to the, to the team behind us in the bag that did an incredible job getting all the people together. We've done so many different sessions that we encourage people. We said, we'll pay you for the time if you want to come during your time off. We paid him for it. We actually had, had them come in at any time with their trucks during workdays. We have sessions all over the place and we are over a hundred, out of the hundred and thirty-four people that didn't have it now have health insurance. So out of, so it's an incredible number that I would say, and, 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 and we're working on the other thirty-four people just to make sure that is either they don't have the insurance, but they have another way of getting that health insurance. So it's, it's and giving credit to the IG as well in helping out, reaching out to the, to those folks as well to help us out.
That is a real significant improvement and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Director.
Yeah, it's great news. Thanks for that update. Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to reference back, I think I can explain something from a conversation that Councilman Conway and the city administrator were having. Something that I think y'all missed out about the hundred percent thing is that Mr. Bell is a marine veteran. And so whereas Councilman Conway was suspicious that there was a hundred percent, I would have been suspicious if it was less than a hundred percent. So it made sense to me. That's my higher veterans plug for the day. But so Director, something that I, I wanted to just kind of get an update on, the trash, the trash as a utility move. If you can just speak to that effort, how that, how that process is going. I think it's a really good idea. I know there's a ton of devils in the details there.
You're talking about the enterprise fund?
Right. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, I, I, we're scheduled to have a meeting with the finance department within the next probably two weeks in order to start the process, how this is gonna look like, what is the impact is gonna be on, you know, on, on, on the tax rate, you know, the property tax, what is the impact of that? What is, what are the positives of, of, of that movement? What are the negatives of it? There are some concerns, obviously. There are some great deal of positives on it. One of the things just, I just bring up to the idea, just to think about it. If it becomes a fee or a bill, will it face the same issue that the water bill does? Many people won't pay, pay it and that becomes an issue. So that's kind of some of the issues that it, we have to to think it through and make sure that is all the questions are answered prior to us getting to more details on it. But, but it's something, it's worth definitely looking at it as part of the tenured plan.
So that, so that conversation, you all said is, is gonna be starting in the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
Okay, great. And there's, obviously, right, there's, you know, there's environmental, probably environmental benefits, there's potential equity problems, right?
That is correct.
There's a lot of different good and bad things going on. Just something that is specific to kind of like the Midtown and like the near West Baltimore and you know, a lot of the, the larger row home neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Where you have a lot of, you know, three-unit and four-unit houses. You have a situation, I just kind of want to get it on the record, and this was something I thought about before. I had noticed in my previous job is you have, you have these property owners who, they don't want to pay, right? They get free trash collection for up to ninety-six gallons.
Yep.
But they've got four tenants or six tenants, right? That's too much for the ninety-six gallons.
Yes.
But it's too small to feasibly afford, you know, to hire cockies or whoever to come and spend a couple hundred dollars a week to haul off their trash, right? Those types of firms don't want to do that. And so you end up in a situation where like the alleys in Midtown and that whole area, it are really, really challenged because you get the over, that's where the overflowing trash can problem, that's like the root of it, right? Is because we've created this, this incentive. So speaking of the mayor, you know, the mayor's focus on cleanliness and all these other efforts, the rats, all this, it, for a lot of the neighborhoods in the city, that is, that is a real benefit that could be overlooked. Wait, I saw you all talking through it, so I appreciate it. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Yes, my, my question is, I remember during our council retreat, we went and visited the facility in West Baltimore, the sanitation facility. I'll say the conditions wasn't, you know, the greatest. You could tell it was an older facility. But I was told that there would be renovations in, in the future. So my question is, could you provide me with an update on the renovations to that facility, also the renovations to Bowley's Lane on East Baltimore? And, and what the plan is with Tustin Street and?
I'll be happy to, to tell you about when you visited that facility. Now, effective probably Monday. Monday, the people on Reed Bird will be moving to Neiman Avenue. Brand-new trailers there waiting for them for the entire place and, and it's, they're gonna be in a brand-new place while we starting the process of reconstructing Reed Bird. So Reed Bird roughly, the design is, I would say, roughly complete or almost complete. We anticipate going into construction sometime late this fall. And for the facility itself, in order to do that, and prior to the summer, we decided to move those folks from Reed Bird now to Neiman. Where, again, it's a brand-new facility to do it. Moving back to, to go into Bowley's Lane. Bowley's Lane, the, we have the, 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 the new locker room or the trailer that some of you visited when they went out. You visited the trailer and the trailer is, now is ready and will be ready by Monday for the folks to be using for new bathrooms and locker rooms. During that period of time, we're gonna be doing renovation for the actual. They're gonna be moving to the trailer during the renovation of the actual locker room and bathrooms. That's roughly four hundred thousand dollar project. After it's completed, then come late this year, maybe early next year, we'll be ready to go with the larger project on Bowley's Lane, which is between twenty-five to twenty-nine million dollars, including phase one of composting, phase two of composting, and the administrative building.
Yeah, I'll see. Thanks, thanks for that information because a lot of the capital budget stuff is in our booklet. So we appreciate getting updates on that type of information.
Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Director. Just following back up on OEC for the rest of the theme of the night. How many inspectors are currently employed by the department? And how does this compare to the volume act, active construction projects under DPW's purview? Is the FY twenty-six budget adequate to meet inspection needs?
Do you want to have that as a budgeting, do you want to have a question that we could return? I hate to give you some numbers right now that are not the exact numbers, but.
I would like an answer now because I would want to know if you, if your previous comments mentioned new six new inspectors, then you should know the total number if you knew the six new inspectors.
Give us a second. We'll pull the numbers
Yeah.
on our side.
I'll wait patiently for it. The other thing is, I've received complaints from citizens as well as residents in my district about the collection of ID, driver's license numbers at our waste stations. My question is, given the amount of use for identification with license numbers and the potential for fraud, why are we not collecting other directory information such as like zip code or their license plate, which can't be traced back to someone's actual like home address? I'm just wondering. And especially since these documents are being recorded on paper files, which means they may not be secure. I just want to make sure that we are acting in the best interest of residents with their actual information.
Do you want to take that question or I have the number of inspectors? Which would?
Please and thank you.
So the total number of inspectors for DPW funded in the twenty-six budget is seventy-two. There are nine that are funded by the stormwater utility, thirty-five funded by the wastewater utility, and twenty-eight funded by the water utility. That includes public works inspectors, one, two, and three in both the general classification as well as the water wastewater classification. And it also includes the inspector training position.
Thank you. So for my committee request, I would like to know the amount of projects for each inspector across each inspector, the amount of times they have to report to each one of their sites, depending on how large the site is. And then who are these six new people and how they're being trained in the training timelines for them? I just want to be clear because OEC is still a big, big, big liability in my district. And I just want to make sure that this is, doesn't become, how can I say this? I'll just be frank. I just don't want this to be a wasteful effort. I'll just be frank. I just don't want this to be a wasteful effort to add six new people and we still meet inadequate service level for our contracts.
Councilman, I would like to meet with you separately to understand what your issue is exactly in that regard and work with you in order to make sure we have all the answers, all of your questions answered. That's for one. Second of all, learn from you. If this is an issue that is, we need to address.
Well, Director, I would say it's not only an issue, I think it's also... I'm trying to be as frank as possible without being... I'll be frank. I just don't care. So there's a leadership issue in OEC, right? I have a contractor who I know is a temporary employee who does not meet the service level for people that live in Baltimore City and how he talks to residents. I know that we have, some of them are full-time employees and some of them are contractual. What I want is a customer service level of a Nordstrom's customer service. When people pay their water bill and we're doing infrastructure installations, if there's an issue outside my front door, I want that issue taken care of. But I also want to make sure that the people that we pay to inspect every day are actually doing their job and showing up. My issue is, is that despite seeing those records, I still see that inspectors are not showing up. I still see code patches that are not to grade according to our own standards. I still see the people that are actually doing this work have New Jersey plates, right? They don't have Maryland, they have New Jersey plates, right? They don't have people that look like me working on those projects. So for me, as a resident who pays high property taxes, I want to make sure that the things and the service delivery is adequate. And this is in the broader scheme as we'll get to conversations about procurement. I think we need to really look at our contractors and look at what the best value is for our contractors, but also look at their past performance, because a lot of our contractors, because of where we are procurement-wise, perform well below the standard of where I see in other jurisdictions. And I think we need to have that on this conversation with our own staff to make sure that we at least have a standard that when we do have to price out our contracts again for bid, we have the documentation to say, Johnson &amp; Johnson did not meet this thing on these multiple projects. I think we should not go with their bid, because they're gonna come back and eat us alive with change orders, because they cut corners and we have to come back and pay and fix it. And from looking, and the reason why I asked the question about your change orders, because I saw the amount of money that we spent in FY '23 and FY '24. And by, in large, they could have been another six or seven water projects based off of the change orders themselves. So in the grand scheme of it, to save money, we got to make sure that our staff is showing up, even the contractual ones, and meeting the standard that we need for our residents.
We've been managing, we've been looking at a lot of these change orders, and I want to take a look at what you're looking at versus what I'm looking at in terms of change orders without getting into the details right now. My numbers are a little bit different than yours in terms of what I think a change order should be and what is the percentage of a change order that it should be on a project. Looking at any construction project, you're looking at 10 to 15% of change order or 10% of a change order is something that is very much within the range. If you're looking at anything beyond that, way beyond that, I would love to look at that in more detail.
So for me, I'm just being frank. If we start noticing a pattern, we need to start thinking about, is it worth the squeezing the juice to go after liquidated damages for people being just neglectful in the work that they do in our city? Because some of these change orders, I could tell you, because we are taking the lowest bid, at some point, they're acting like the lowest bid on purpose and destroying our streets.
And, yeah, I could, looking at that lowest bid item, as you said, this is one of the issues that we're looking at citywide. And we're looking at, maybe there are better models to deal with this issue. Obviously, there are better models to deal with this than looking at the lowest bid. But that's what we have with, according to the charter right now, and that's what we're working with. One of the issues, one of the things that it works for us that I see, it is the number of bidders that we have. And we have in water and wastewater, we have, coming from a different environment, where you barely can get one or two bidders. We get three to five bidders on average on a project. Yes, we have some projects that we have a single bidder or two bidders, but on average, the environment that we're in, from a bidding process, I think it's a healthy environment. Do we need some additional work? Do we need some additional experience? Do we need some additional, maybe oversight to some degree? Yes. But I'm wanting to sit down and work with you, Councilman, to get to the bottom of those issues that you have, that you need an answer for, and learn from you. If there are things that we need to do to better the way we do business, we'll do that as well.
So circle back to the last question about the data that we're collecting from residents with our license numbers, because if anyone knows our financial information, you need a licensed ID number to actually access some people's financial information. So I'm wondering, why are we not collecting other directory information such as the license plate number or a zip code that have proof of a Baltimore City resident, so that we're protecting people's identities?
So we're actively working with our legal team on that very issue. But we were collecting the driver's license to keep track of how many times they come into the recycling centers. So that was the reason. But we are actively, we actually have a draft of a new policy that's making its rounds, just for that very reason that you're talking about.
So I would like a meeting on that, because I'm just aware of people's identity theft in this day and age. The other piece is that we, you guys are supposed to be, we're supposed to digitize how we receive people at the yards anyway to keep track of metrics and data. So I would just like you to get an update on that. And I can do that within a month.
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My last two questions. One is about the capital budget, and I know we're gonna have a larger conversation about the capital budget tomorrow. But there is this project that I saw here. It is Greenmount Avenue, 36 Water Main Rehab. And I think my colleague from the Fourth and I had a conniption fit the last time this came up, because I believe it is actually going onto Greenmount Avenue, where we just had conduit water and everything else put in during the pandemic. Is that what this is? The project number is PRJ 002959, WC 1419. Because what we said at the time was that in no way, shape, or form should our businesses go through that again anytime soon. You need to put, there you go.
Yeah, Chief Wolf, OEC. That project, I'm not sure if that's the 30-inch transmit, Water Main project that?
That's what it's, I just, I don't have a description. It just has the line.
Yeah, because I mean, that particular project's actually, we're gonna do a lining project as opposed to a excavation. So we're gonna do, which would minimize impacts, but I'd have to check, because I'm not sure exactly off the top of my head that project, but I'll write it down and can email you.
Yeah, if we can get that, that would be super helpful. We, our businesses and our residents were inconvenienced mightily during the pandemic. So we want to make sure that that doesn't happen again anytime soon. So I'll get the number to you so that we can take a look.
You will, okay. Thank you.
And then my second question was, and this might be for the financial folks. On page 70 of the executive summary, it talks about the, I guess I'm just curious around the collections from, from the county and from our surrounding counties look lower. Is that your read also?
I don't have the page in front of me.
And I think it's just a larger question of like, are they paying us what they should be paying us in terms of, my understanding of how this works is they can set their rate, which makes no sense to me, but there we are. They can set their rates. And then we get reimbursed from the government, whether it's the county or the other surrounding counties, the actual cost minus what we collected based on their rate. So are we actually seeing that? Because I don't see, I see where the collections are here and I don't know whether that's just based on the rate or what they also owe us and why it's a little bit lower this year.
That would require more detailed breakdown, but you're correct. The county sets their rate, but we concur with it. We evaluate it. We charge the maximum that we need to charge. We are obligated to charge them at cost for water per state law in our agreement with them from 1973. If we charge them anymore, that would result in us having to pay them.
Which we don't want to do.
Exactly. So we charged them exactly what we needed costs, and we true up those costs each and every year to determine what those payments are. That's for Baltimore County, but we have wholesale agreements with other counties that pay us directly, such as Howard County.
Oh, okay. That's right. It's not the same for each of the other counties. Got it.
Howard County and Carroll County and Hartford County are wholesale contracts.
But so these numbers, this is actually page 71, Baltimore County actually went up. But that, so that's the rate plus what they owe us. Is that what that revenue stream is?
For which fund?
Baltimore County, RCOs 381, page 71.
I don't have the page in front of me. Do you know what fund does it say, water or wastewater at the top?
It says metered water, Baltimore County.
Yes. That's what they pay us in any difference that we're owed.
That's all included in that line item?
Yes.
The rate and the amount that they owe us to make up the difference. Okay. Okay, and then the number is down for Howard County?
It all depends on volume. For example, Howard County recently reduced their usage by 5 million gallons per day because they're getting water from WSSC. So it just depends on the volume.
Oh, interesting. Okay. So they changed a little bit about how they're getting the water. I'm super fascinated about this. It is almost 10 o'clock at night, so I'm not gonna go into details about all of this, but I do want to follow up with you if I can on the, just the water billing with other counties and all of that kind of stuff. I think it's something that has to be reevaluated, frankly, but I want to get into it further.
I'd just like to add to, Aaron, we do a monthly meeting with the county at a leadership level and the people level in which a lot of those details are finalized. We have issues sometime that comes up, that is, I understand the payment issue, that whatever we have, submit it to them and ask them for, it has been paid for us. $10 million, I think the last one, right? Yeah. They paid us $10 million the last time. That we had a question at some point, that is, they came back questioning the numbers, a $2 million number. We kind of looked at it, evaluated, and came back and said, no, no, actually, you probably were looking at $10 million.
Well, I appreciate that. It wasn't like that when I first came on the council. I think that there was a lot of mystery behind the whole thing.
Yeah. That is done now on a regular basis and we're meeting with them on...
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I'll follow up with you directly on that, but I appreciate the dialogue. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I think they owe us $12 million. We should look at that again. You know, on that question, I mean, I get that a lot, because my district has four miles of city-county border. And I'm not sure I ever asked you this question. I've asked the other directors in the past. Can you explain whether or not city residents are paying more for water than county residents?
That's a very good question. So we, during the governor's tasks for the regional water, they looked at that numbers and they evaluated both numbers. But what they failed to look at, it is, the wastewater piece is in the county, is part of their tax bill. So what the county folks pay for, just they pay for the water bill. If you look at a typical household in Baltimore City, it's roughly, let's say, a household that pays $140 per month. $95 out of the $140 is wastewater. And why? Because we have all the consent decree, we have all the compliance issue, we have all of that. So, and then you have the wastewater, the stormwater piece. So it's roughly, when we looked at it, we're paying probably a dollar or two more than a typical county resident on the water bill itself, on the water usage. Again, it goes back, that is, what they do in the county, the wastewater piece is part of their tax bill on a regular basis. So the answer is, we probably pay more than the county, but it probably buy a dollar or more, nothing more.
So if people use a set, a same amount of the units of water, right? I think, I think I meant like eight units a month or something like that, and somebody in the county uses that same amount, you're saying it will be a different price in the county? Overall, I'm saying when you take out those line items from the, and I've looked at it. I've looked at the property tax bills in the county. I see exactly the numbers you're talking about. When you take those numbers with their quarterly bills that they're getting, it's going to be comparable?
Yeah. Again, I looked at it, the reports came from the regional workforce, and they look at that into details. And it defined the difference between what the, a typical county resident or a typical city resident paid, and the difference is very minimal in the amount, on the water bill itself. Now, the difference that it goes here, I go back, I continue to say, it is the wastewater piece is the largest piece out of our bill or their bill or whatever. But in their case, it's part of their property tax and it's not part of their, it's not part of their water bill itself.
Gotcha. Okay, I gotta refresh on it and look up a few and compare them. The other question I have about that is with the water billing credits, when there is a leak. So we had this issue that I brought up, and I know you guys had said you were going to be addressing it. Whereas if you go back two months or two bills in Baltimore City, that's two months period of time. But if you go back two bills in the county, that's six month period of time. So right now, if there's a leak, what period of time are you looking back, both in the city and county? They're bringing out the collections team for this.
Bring them. Toya Sykes, Chief of Customer Support and Services Division. To answer your question, for Baltimore City, we would look at the highest three bills. For Baltimore County, we would look at it based on the quarter, which is three months per quarter. So depending on, some of the leaks overlap in quarters, we would still look at those three particular bills to see how we would apply the adjustment. And remember, Baltimore County is only charged for water consumption, not sewer. So the adjustment is a little different.
Gotcha. Okay, so the time period has now been lined up, you're saying? So if there's a leak in the county, are they, so they're only getting the adjustment on the water portion? They're not getting an adjustment on their tax portion?
That is correct.
Gotcha, okay. So the...
Yeah, because we don't charge them for sewer consumption.
Gotcha, I see. Okay. And somebody sent me this note, I don't know who, it just appeared here, but it says that Baltimore County has a lot more miles of pipe, so they should pay more. Who's that from?
That was me, Mr. Chair. I'm just, what I'm curious about is, I mean, it's more pipe to maintain. So why wouldn't it cost more? Their water consumption, because that factors in the miles of pipe, right?
This is, this is an agreement, a long-term agreement, goes back to the 70s and, and, yeah, so it's...
So...
Well, there's, yeah, Director, just a couple of things. Their infrastructure is not nearly as old as ours. Theirs is starting to degrade on their inner ring suburbs. But we're, our city is, what, 1706? Maybe not the water system, of course. A lot of their development has happened over the last 40, 50, 60 years. So they might have 30, 40, 50, 60-year-old pipes, whereas we have 110-year-old pipes, which we are attempting to address over time. So their infrastructure is not as old, plus our streets are more crowded and very dense with many utilities throughout and a lot of connections too. So even though we have like multiple connections, just a lot going on, especially in our downtown.
That point alone, that is, it is building, building a water line on Charles Street with having utilities as Spaghettis, number of utilities, is much more costly than probably doubling the lane miles or doubling the miles in terms of the, that you do in the county in some ways, that is, in an area that is open to the public and is open completely. It's between the maintenance of traffic, between the mobilization costs, those alone, they could get to 30% of the total cost of a project. they could get to thirty percent of the total cost of a project. Then a contractor will come in and will take a look at a project and will say, what do I need to be the risk factor? I'm hitting a gas line, I'm hitting a conduit here, I'm hitting, all that risk add up to a project. There is a project in Baltimore City will cost a lot more than a project in the county per foot or per mile or per whatever you're looking at.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'm still suspicious of agreements that were made with the county in the seventies being in, of, in our interest as a city.
So, and, and I, I see where we're going with this particular line of questioning, which is a very interesting line of questioning. And I do want to point back to what Director Zaid mentioned at the top about the regional govern, the Regional Water Governance Task Force that was convened last year. And I think some members of the council may have participated in some of those sessions. There was a report that came out of that, and a part of what we are looking at with this regional governance model is the pay structure with the surrounding jurisdictions that, like everyone has said, is governed by agreements that date back decades. So as a part of the work that we're doing to regionalize our system, we are taking a closer look. There are some limitations around what we can and cannot do, but it's absolutely a conversation that we should be having and we are having as we look at regionalizing the governance structure of our system.
Thank you, Madam, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You're good. Thank you so much for that. Councilman Torrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Director, I just want to go back to what Councilman Gray mentioned earlier. As a person who used to be a former employee of DPW through Clean and Green of Baltimore, I see a lack in terms of educating people about recycling. I go back to the days when we were all forced to go to schools and print out these nice clear stickers, put on people's recycling bins to say, this is how you recycle, having videos online where people learn how to rinse their recyclable materials so that we don't contaminate, and we had a higher collection rate. And I think we need to get back to basics. I would like to have a meeting with you and your staff to discuss how we can flush out your communications team to get some additional pens for them, because I think we need educators in our community, in our schools. Because in my district, people do use the blue trash, the blue recycling bin as a trash can, and we have to educate them. The reason why is because each day that they collect those bins and it's a waste of us collecting any type of revenue from it anyway, it's just a wasted opportunity for us to actually divert trash from actually going into landfills. So I think basically we could, I would like to work out a plan to get some educators to go back in the schools and the senior facilities and homes to teach people how to recycle, just going back to basics.
So Director, if, if you can have like your team just set up a weekly meeting with Councilman Torrance to go through these items, I think we can have it all sorted out by next year.
Well, I, I would like to put in a plug, Tierra and team is here. So when we went back to weekly recycling, we did do a push-around education. They came up with a jingle. And then there's three steps, and Tierra and team helped me make sure that this is accurate. Clean it, what is clean it, can it, curb it? Clean it, contain it, curb it is the model, but not to steal the director's thunder. But there's, but appreciate that, and I do think that there's an opportunity for us to partner with the school system on some of the materials that we developed to promote weekly recycling.
Well, not even that. I, I still remember I got overtime from going to community association meetings, physically with trash and teaching people how to recycle in the community association.
We're not going to talk about overtime. I'm kidding.
Well, I think the cost of getting more materials to pass muster for like not being contaminated is worth the overtime. I think we need to have a balance of learning how to invest, because within, and I was there for that hard conversation when grandmothers were yelling at us about taking their second day of trash away. I remember people in stormed and multiple like auditoriums filled with people yelling at us because we took away their second day of trash, their second day of trash and now call it recycling. I'd rather go back to those days of being yelled at because that forced people to think twice about what they were doing with recycling, and we gave them solutions, like a simple, we spent, we spent a hundred thousand dollars on clear stickers that go on the recycling bins and it worked. People were like, I, I had grandmothers calling us saying, oh, I put it on my recycling bin, I followed the steps on a recycling bin, and that's what happened. I think that like, these are simple things that we can do to increase our revenue without it being like a burden. Because I feel bad for the crews because they have more tonnage. But the more tonnage means that there's a lot of more contamination and that means that we're not clearing it. That means Bresko's could fill with more trash, right? So I think we need to think about it, and I would be happy to be a thought partner and a leader and just, I'll even shoot a video for you and go and do education myself, because this is an important tool for us.
Thank you. We will follow up and schedule time with you in Charm TV.
You gonna sing the jingle?
You don't want to hear my jingle.
Director, shifting gears for a second, last year we, we discussed at the budget hearing about Big Truck Day, about, you know, obviously making sure that, that was able to be accessed by everybody across the city. You guys, what's that? You guys said that you were gonna work on making it a two-day extravaganza. That obviously didn't happen. It was only done on Saturday. I mean, what, why is it such a big deal to just do it on a Sunday also?
And, and I thought that that was an issue that we, we, we will, we will, we will make sure that this time around that is going to be done more than one day. Is there a reason? Anything else you want to add to that? That, that's, that's a good question here, and we need to talk to the Public Works experience, that are the people who run this specific thing, but I think we could, we could make that ask.
So on that same thing, and I've been asked in some other agencies the same thing, who, who's your equity coordinator?
It's, we have Marco. Marco's here.
Marco?
Yeah.
Oh, he's right there. I'm Marco. Come to the podium. Yeah, I, I didn't realize that's what you did. You gotta, you gotta push the button before you tell us who you are.
There we are. Good evening again. I'm Marco Merrick. I'm the Chief of Equity and Environmental Justice.
So thank you. Mr. Merrick, can you, can you just, just discuss a little bit about what, what that means in DPW? Like what kind of things you're working on and doing?
Well, absolutely. When I came to DPW four years ago, nearly five years ago, one of the things that I've been happy to brand DPW with, we have a mantra titled Equity in All We Do, and that's looking very comprehensively at what that looks like for us to exercise and uphold the city's equity ordinance. And so equity for us is taking a very deep dive at, particularly internally, before we can do anything to really import this mantra of equity in all we do externally. We're working internally to ensure that the entirety of DPW has a comprehensive understanding of what equity looks like in a very pure sense. Equity is about fairness and it's about providing and shifting the pendulum of decision, power, influence from what has traditionally been that to places of pain, places, places of disenfranchisement, even in our agency. Right now, we are very aggressively going across the agency from facility to facility, yard to yard, so that our employees understand that they do matter and that the decisions that we have to make in the executive boardroom are influenced by the employees who are not in the room. The employees do not have the convenience of even being at some of the trainings. Today, we had a very comprehensive equity committee training. It's, it's our routine meeting that we have. The focus on this particular meeting today was on the equity issue of safety. Safety is not just something physical. It is emotional, it's psychological, it's mental. What does that look like for us when we make safety a priority? That's an equity issue. So we look at the fullness of safety. So each component in our agency, we, we had our solid ways. We had safety and compliance. We had our equity office, we had our training office, our safety and training office, and then we partner with our, with our equity colleagues. Our equity colleague from the city's health department also spoke with us about equity. Now, that's a, that's a microcosm of the whole of DPW. And so we also now have equity change groups. So they're, they're broken into smaller groups so that at every level of the agency, folk are being informed, they're being educated, they're being trained, and they're also providing feedback to us about what they are garnering from these presentations. And there's a full, there's a full curriculum of equity. It's not just about safety. It may be about race, it may be age, it may be gender. These are all things that are important to how we instill in our employees, how they are valued, how they are important, and how they make DPW the DPW that it needs to be. And I, I could go into more detail, but.
Yeah, if you can just explain a little bit about what that, like what the impact has been. You said you've been there for four years, and so like, what specific tangible results are we, you know, should we look at and say, okay, that's what we were looking to, to accomplish?
I can tell you, first of all, when I first came to DPW, one of the things that we're really proud of and probably has been a missed opportunity is that there are, we, we, we talk about culture all the time, shifting the culture. That's the work of DEI, shifting cultures. DPW is not a culture. It's many cultures. And in some units and some, in some divisions and some components, there are subcultures. When I first came to DPW, and because I know at that time it was a disadvantage for the agency because only our public-facing workers who were doing routine services were reporting to work. Many of us were working in our own respective homes because of the pandemic. We did not have an onboarding process that provided an orientation process for employees, and so that evolved. We were instrumental in working with HR, working with our safety and training to implement training and orientation, new employee orientation, where all employees have the opportunity to have what we would level set so that employees aren't just coming in and going their first day into their work. They're learning what DPW is, what DPW does, and how important they are. A part of many of those pieces in the curriculum for new employees is the diversity, equity, and inclusion training. So every new employee who has come in this agency in the last four years knows about the city's equity ordinance. They understand what the objectives are around diversity, equity, inclusion, and environmental justice. So I can say that in the four-year window, now we have a very large population of new employees coupled with the veteran employees who we are continuing to include in these trainings so that folk understand that this is a requirement. This is not an option in Baltimore.
I, I'd like to add one more thing, that is, for a long period of time, and we learned that last year and the years before, that is, a lot of our employees feel at some point that they don't matter for some reason. And I think this thing just allowed them to happen. We've been, and, and Marco has been going to each one of those facilities, and we, I'll tell you something. We concentrated this time around on all solid waste facilities, especially after what happened the past year and all of that stuff. And Marco goes to all these facilities and at minimum the message there, at minimum, you guys matter, you people matter, and, and, and we need to get that message across to all our employees within DPW.
And thank you for that. I mean, look, we definitely, you know, from our visits to all those facilities, we've definitely seen an improvement from, from the start to now on, you know, morale and some of the other facility improvements that we had been discussing. You know, you, you were talking a little bit about, about diversity also, and this is something that Councilman Ramos had brought up at a previous hearing. How would you say the agency is doing when it comes to diversity, when it comes to hiring? Is, does the agency look like the demographic of Baltimore? Is it broken down by the various different populations that we have in Baltimore?
I think that the agency, when you talk about diversity, and that can be very, very subjective, it can be very objective. So we could be in a room of people who look just like me, and it is diverse, because we're not just talking about race. We may be talking about educational background, we may be talking about community, maybe talking about culture, maybe talking about exposure. So yes, we are, and I think that we continue, because HR is very, very informed about the opportunities that we have to, because we, we certainly are, we have addressed our vacancy rate very effectively. And so we are speaking to that, and we have a very diverse population in DPW.
I'll, I'll add to that a little bit. I think we're probably in the city, we're probably the most diver, the most representation of the city of Baltimore, if you look at, we probably have the same issues that are the good and the issue that we struggle with as well as in terms of population. So if you look at the, because of the large number of employees that are within solid waste and the large number of employees within water and wastewater, we have the same issues that the city have. We have the, 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 we, we have the struggle, some of the issue that it has to deal with, with other agencies or with a representation of the city as a whole. So I think while I look at DPW being an other organization around the city, DPW is probably the best representation of the population of this.
And Director, we can, we can also track for you, because in our equity meetings and, and through the work that we're doing as we again meet with all of our new employees, we get data, so we can follow up with what it really looks like. Now, we know that we're in a city now that is three-quarters of population people of color, but that is, that can be, of course, parsed out, but we can circle back and, and provide data for you on what those numbers really look like.
Yeah, I mean, I'm more, more interested in seeing what, you know, how you're measuring it, right? Because like you were talking about, you know, the different groups that, that could be there. And when I look, when I, and I visit probably DPW facilities more, more often than, than really any other place, I feel right at home, but I'd never seen anybody who looks like me at any of these facilities or any of the DPW agencies.
Our people, so I think that's a, that's a recruitment strategy that we would be, we could be progressive or aggressive, more aggressive about, but we also have to understand what our, what our recruitment pool looks like. And if, if we got candidates that are looking for jobs in DPW that look like you, they certainly have an opportunity, like everybody.
Well, you know, if they found out how much money, you know, that, that you can make working down a DPW across the street, they probably would apply. Just, I don't know where that outreach is, you know, if that outreach is happening. Where it's happening or when it's happening, I know a lot of these job fairs happen just like the, the truck days, they happen on Saturdays. So that's not very inclusive. But you know, if, if you can just get back to, to the committee or get back to me, really just high level, like how you're measuring it? What metrics are you measuring?
Absolutely.
Because a previous agency told me they're, they're not measuring based off of, off of, you know, certain demographics. They're only selecting certain demographics, and obviously my demographic didn't meet that selection. So I'm just curious how you're measuring that.
We'll give you a breakdown. We have that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yes, that is an official request. Any, any questions from the council? All right, just my last question, Mr. Bell, is that right? Come back up. We're talking about like boardups and I think while you were up here before, people were talking about the Clean Core program. So I assume that program's still going on?
Yes, it is, but Clean Core doesn't fall under property management.
So, I know, but they're, they're doing a lot of the same work that you're doing, correct?
Yes, sir.
So is there any difference between the way they're doing it and the way you guys are doing it?
No, we actually trained them when they started. We went out and trained them and showed them exactly what we did and how we needed it done.
Did they pay you for that training?
No.
They should have. So now with that program ending, Director, are those employees, are, have you recruited and gotten any people from that, that Clean Core program to come and work in DPW? And if so, how many of them?
I understand we, we try sometimes to recruit and to get some of those guys, but I don't have a number that I could tell you, but we, we could look at it and figure out what that number is.
So is it still going? Because I, I saw one of the previous things that said that the money was like ninety-five percent expended.
The program is still going.
Until the, until it's a hundred percent or?
Yes, until it's a hundred percent.
Okay, so in those areas that they're servicing, do you guys and your crew not go to those areas? You just defer all of that to them?
So what we do is, we give them, they have a list of communities, and we issue them work orders in the communities for them to clean. So we are in every community, so we, we don't go back behind them and clean the same address.
Gotcha. So the ones that, the neighborhoods they're in, you just forward the work orders to them? And then when that ends, you're just. And then when that ends, you're just gonna absorb that work?
No, what happens is they close the work orders, yes.
No, but I'm saying when their program's up, you'll just absorb those neighborhoods back?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any final questions? Any, uh, closing statements, Director?
I just, just wanted to thank the, the council for allowing us to do this today and, and, uh, see you next year.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, um, on behalf of myself, that, you know, you have, you have certainly turned around one of the most troubled agencies as far as we're seeing progress being made and we're seeing that you're actually doing what you say you'll do. Um, and you're responding to questions to the, you know, from the council. Um, and, and the workers appreciate that, we hear it. I mean, all of us hear from workers directly and, you know, they all, they all say good things about you. And so you should just know that, that they appreciate it, that you're out there and you're doing these things that you say you're gonna do. Um, and, you know, it's just appreciated that, that you're really taking this stuff that the council's brought to you seriously, uh, and making those improvements. And I think the city's gonna be better off for it.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank the team behind us and to thank the folks on the streets. We have some of the, and I keep saying it, at DPW, there is a pride there. There is a pride in DPW that you see and you see there every day. And those guys are some of the hardest-working people that I've met. And I'm glad to be part of, part of that team. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I know some of my colleagues are still recovering from the, uh, the small shift that they did, so, so certainly. Well, we are, we are now in recess and we will resume again at nine AM tomorrow morning. Uh, please be on time if you're coming back tomorrow. Thank you.